It is 6:03. I will call this meeting of the public, of the Committee of the Whole to order. It is October 25th. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Next item is roll call.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Aratafrotta.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst. Not online yet. He intends to join online. Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Cold and present.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Excellent. Next item is the approval of minutes of the September 27th meeting. We could use a motion.
So move.
So move.
There we go. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is public agenda appearances for non-agenda items. It doesn't appear that we have any of those. So we will move on to the thrill-packed and exciting episode of discussing the amendments to the 2024 budget. I guess we will start with Misty, who has a small discussion about the process and where we go from here. So Misty.
Yeah, so first I'll talk about process for tonight, and then after we're done with our discussion, we'll talk about the process going forward. But for tonight, included in the packet was the packet of the 18 council-proposed amendments to the mayor's 2024 budget and the three staff-prepared omnibus or correction amendments to the mayor's proposed 2024 budget. Included in the packet is a summary. The different colored columns tell you whether or not it impacts property taxes, which is that levy limit concern we have, or and/or if it impacts expenditure restraint, which are the purple columns. But I'll remind you that that doesn't matter for this year. Part of Act 12 is we're getting a free pass for this year, and we'll have to comply again next year. So expenditure restraint's not an issue, but levy limit obviously still is. Included in the mayor's proposal, there was $17,389 of levy limit capacity still available. There's also that $125,000 of levy capacity that was retained for the hub operating costs that we expect to come on in 2025. So that's what is in there now. When we go through the amendments tonight, we're going to go through them one by one. At the top of the form, it tells you on the left-hand corner what the levy impact is, so you can see how it would impact the amount of property tax funding. We still have the authority to spend. And then there's the description of what the amendment is, why the amendment is important. There's a finance director's note, and then the accounting information is below that. There are three amendments that have staff memos associated with them, so you'll see those included with the particular amendments. I'm really using to, I have that background and context that you guys can make an informed decision and understand all of the different implications that are involved. So it doesn't go so far as to make a recommendation. It's just providing more information for all of you. And then we did ask all of the department heads that have an amendment that impact their budget to be present tonight, so that they're available for whatever questions you may have as you're doing your discussion. And then I'll remind you, this is the meeting to discuss, right? So I'm hopeful that we have some good conversation about what the amendments are, why they're important, what questions you have. When we get to the next council meeting, where we actually adopt the budget, that's where discussion is very limited. You can each only speak a certain number of times. The conversation is limited. So the intention is tonight, we will have the bulk of that discussion. So when we go to the council meeting, it's kind of boom, boom, boom with the votes to get it done. And so with that, that's all I have. I will share my screen, so we can all kind of follow along.
All right. Any questions for Misty? Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, I see we have three people in the audience. Do we want to rearrange anything so that they can get on with their evening?
Well, some of the, the one registration I have is for multiple amendments, so we'll just work our way through them.
All right, we'll hunker down.
Gabriella, you had a question?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move a couple amendments around. I'd like to move Amendment 1 after Amendment 8 and move Amendment 2 after Amendment 6 for the session.
Okay. So there, do we have a second for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe? And then any discussion on why these are moving?
The only thing is that those two amendments, they're paired with other ones, so I want to discuss them together, which is why I'm moving them.
So one is going with 8 and 2 is going with 6?
Yes.
All right. So if that, in that case, Dave is not here yet. So let's just skip Amendment 3 and 4 for now. And then, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification is, are you planning on reading the, any of the emails that have come through? I know there have been several emails from members of the public about various amendments over the past week or so.
I wasn't. I've, I've seen a couple of emails, but most of the emails I saw were in regard to the resolution we dealt with last night.
Do you mind if I?
I've been on the road all day, so I have no idea what came in today.
I have a suggestion, if you're open to it. So we have a public hearing at the next council meeting, which is where the public's chance to weigh in on all of the amendments are. Generally, you would read support or against emails at that public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. So we'll save Dave's amendments until he's on, so I think we'll just go to Amendment 5, which is Gabriella.
Hold on just one moment while I pull it up.
While we're holding, it is to utilize levy limit capacity for the hub on one-time projects or contingency funding.
Yes. So as we all know from the budget presentation, the mayor set aside $125,000 in levy limit capacity intentionally to save room for that for the 2025 budget, because that's when operating costs for the hub will kick in, because the hub is going to be built next year. Because that capacity exists, but obviously cannot be used for operating expenses, and I support the hub, so I want to keep that. However, the capacity exists, and I feel like there's an opportunity to use that funding, that levy limit capacity for one-time use. I didn't want to say what that could be used for, given the fact that I didn't even know if the council would be open to this idea, so I kept it pretty general. But I did clarify in the amendment that we could use it for one-time projects. Those could be items in the, in this, in this group of amendments that are one-time projects. Or we could divert all of it or the rest of that to contingency funding. As many of you may know, we budget very, very little to contingency. I think it's somewhere in the range of $10,000 a year for a city of our size. It's very, very minimal. And I think if we were able to put, you know, a few hundred, $100,000 into contingency, that would create a lot of flexibility for staff as projects come up, make it a little bit easier to make ends meet when we have a change in price for something. So that would be my proposal to the council, and I'd be interested to hear what you'll have to say.
All right. I have, I have two questions. The first one is, what is the expected operating expense for the hub once it's fully up and running?
So the placeholder amount that was identified in the mayor's 2024 budget is the $125,000.
Right. But what do we actually expect it's going to cost?
I don't know if Chad has a better answer, but my understanding is that is very unclear at this point.
Well, we had requested an estimate, and as my recollection is, was around $115,000 to $120,000 at the estimate we got from one of the departments. Part of that included a floor scrubber, which was 10 grand. I think we were going to look at alternate sources to take care of that. And then the other thing, obviously, is just the utilities, building maintenance. You know, we know, even though that the building is brand-new, that something will break. That's just inevitable. So we've come up with our best estimate slash guestimate at this point in time as to what the operating cost will be, and we're hopeful that we're close.
So we think the $125,000 is close?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the other question is, I'm not sure what you are describing with the $10,000 contingency. I mean, we have an, we have an undesignated cash reserve that's like millions of dollars. I don't know what you mean by contingency. Every project we do typically will have a contingency amount in there, like a road construction project or something like that. So I'm not sure precisely what you're referring to.
So I mean, actually, there's a line item for contingency funding in the budget. And I, obviously, you know, individual road projects will have contingency, but, but it could be used for absolutely anything in the budget at any amount. Misty, can you clarify? I believe there's actually a line item for contingency funding that we have annually.
Yep. It's included in the general fund budget in the interdepartmental section. I think it's $12,500 is the amount that we put in each year. And when we don't spend it, we carry it over. So I think we've got $25,000 in there right now. But as Gabriella alluded to, it is very small. Generally, best practice is to have half a percent of your total budget, which is nowhere near the $12,000 number. So that, that money is available. In order to spend it, though, it would have to go through the council resolution budget amendment process. And then it'd be very important that we'd spend that on one-time things and not ongoing costs.
What, what have we used that for in the past?
We haven't used it the last couple of years. Before that, I don't recall, but I can, I can look it up.
That's fine. Any other questions on this amendment? Bill?
So we, we put the $125,000 into the 2024 budget. Was there any thought given as to what we would do with that money at the time it was put in there as a placeholder, or was it?
Saving.
Just for saving? Okay. And is that, like, I don't know what the overall budget is for the hub. Is this, would this go toward replacement fund, or is the hub too expensive for that?
May I clarify this one?
Please.
So the $125,000 is just money that's set aside in the levy limit. It is not money that we will collect. It's just kind of keeping it in the capacity for the future year's budget. I have a strategy that I'm allowed to use that will reserve it for next year. So it's not money that we're going to collect. It's not going to be cash in our bank account as it is currently proposed. This proposal would be that we actually collect that money and use it.
All right. Any other questions on that? I can't tell if anybody playing the home game wants to comment, because I don't see any little hand raise icons up there, and nobody's waving at me. So with that, Dave, are you?
No comment from Dave Herbst.
Okay. Dave, so you're actually there.
I'm online.
Yeah. So we skipped a couple of your amendments, so I want to go back to those now that you're here. And that was Amendment 3 and 4. So...
I don't have, I don't have anything in front of me. What, what was number 3?
Number 3 is removing funding for free e-bike passes.
Yes. So my, my feeling is anyone can go to a bike store and try out a e-bike. I don't see why we should spend $2,500 of taxpayers' money to give people, you know, free rides. We're, we're spending way too much on this already. So that's, you know, if you want to try out an e-bike, you can go to a store and try one out. And so that's, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
What?
Go ahead, Dave.
All right. What was number 4 then, Dave?
Well, yeah, we're going to finish up with 3. Bill's got a question on that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, these are not just for trying out. These are for transportation. If you need to go somewhere, you can, if you happen to have a pass, you can get from A to B. This is not just, you know, I want, I want to play around for the next 20 minutes or something and see what it's like.
What is?
Come on, Bill. We're not going to be, they're not going to be transporting on these. You know, I, I just think this is, this is probably, you know, either people, they get e-bikes, you know, I, I know it's a great vision to say, oh, we have these bikes and people can go to the grocery store and this or that. I just don't see it, see it happening. We're not, we're not Holland. I, I think this is unnecessary use of taxpayer money. So I, I, you know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not criticizing you. I just, I just disagree with you on that, Bill.
Joe?
I think Olivia's first.
Oh.
So, yes, I, I, you know, I think that we are talking about $2,500, and we, the city have invested a lot of money in this B-cycle. And this is a great opportunity for people to, people that they don't have the means to pay sometime for their pass, you know, that they can take advantage of this and the opportunity to, you know, like Bill mentioned, to, to use it. And maybe they can feel comfortable and they can try for a month or for a couple of weeks. And then, you know, eventually they say, yeah, this is a good way of transportation, and we can continue, you know, they can continue with, with using them. I think this is no charity at all. This is giving the opportunity to, to some people to have access to, to Bcycle. And I feel like the item number 4 there, you know, that Alder and the mayor should donate their, their salary for this. I think this is totally out of the, this is a phrase that it shouldn't be there, because I think we do a lot for the city, the people that are sitting here. And that comment is out of line. So I think, I am very strong about this, especially we are going to work with an organization to provide those, especially in the healthy neighborhood areas. And I'm surprised that, you know, that Alder Herbst, they want to remove that, because he had two big areas in his district that people can use those passes.
Can I just get a point of clarification?
I will.
Dave, I just want to get a point of clarification here first. If we have $2,500, what does that actually buy? How much does a pass cost? What's the duration? What would this be buying?
It's my understanding that an annual pass to ride Bcycle is about $250. So this could provide, for instance, you know, 1000, 10, annual passes, or you could break it down, you know, per month, which I think is maybe $30 a month, you know, and do, you know, whatever 2,500 divided by 30 is. I'm not going to pull that off the top of my head, you know, to do that for monthly passes. So that's the general thought process. And of course, the city would have to identify a community-based organization to work with in order to facilitate distribution of these passes. Okay. Joe?
Yeah. Couple things just to add to the conversation. I mean, one, this, this amount is really minimal in the scheme of our budget, so I don't want to spend too much time debating it. But I would say, one, the fact that it is going to community-based organizations means that folks that are in those organizations will have a pretty good grasp of who could best benefit from them. I think that also brings benefit in terms of promotion of our Bcycle. I mean, we've had some pretty big corporate donations as well as grant. So money has come into the city to support this. So I just think this small amount is a very negligent amount to be able to potentially do some sort of an impact and possibly also bring additional investment. You know, if this pilot is successful, you know, I could see companies, you know, chipping in. And, and I think it's just a good kind of spark and head start in investment in this large investment that we've already made and large investment that others have made in our city. I think also just given some of the transportation gaps that we have, this by no means will solve all those problems or any of them, but it will at least show a level of commitment from the city to equity in, in a small sense. Again, it's not, it's a drop in the bucket, but I think it's at least an important gesture.
All right. Gabriella, and then Dave. We can't hear you.
A quick comment. I echo a lot of what Joe says, but the, I kind of see this as a great opportunity to pilot it. I mean, I don't know what, how these will, passes will be used. I don't think we can answer that question until we've actually tried it out. So I think it's worthwhile to see how they're used. And because our Bcycles are, stations are located at places that people should want to visit, like the library, and because we know we have those transit deficits in our city, I think it'd be interesting to see if someone can use it. Also, the fact that it's an electric bike, although a lot of people have access to bikes, not a lot of people have access to electric bikes just given the cost. So that could be a great extra incentive for these, to make it more useful for transit versus just a, a regular standard bicycle. So I think it'd be a cool pilot. And I do think we should do some assessment and see how it works and who was using them and why. But it seems like such a small amount of money not to give it a shot.
All right, Dave.
I would, I would, I would say I, I think the money should be raised from donations. It is a charity regardless of what the mayor says. You are taking taxpayers' money and redistributing it. I don't feel this is really a matter of equity. We're, we're bike crazy here. You know, people will ride these that want to, but, you know, it's death by 1,000 paper cuts, you know. You say, oh, it's only $2,500, and $2,500, and this and that. And, you know, maybe, maybe you, maybe you don't think it's much, but we, we keep adding all these up, and then people can't afford to live in their houses. And we're spending money on this bicycle utopia in the northern, northern climate. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Any other? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have any problem with this, but Chad, do we have any information on ridership overall on the bikes?
We did actually get some information about a month or so ago from Bcycle, the first run on that, and I'd be happy to share that with council if you're interested.
Yeah, please forward that. Any other questions? All right, Dave, the next one is yours also. I'm going to have you introduce it, and then we have a registered speaker here on this item. So this one is remove increased funding for H&amp;I grants freeze at 2023 levels.
And this is, this is my point. This is the same contention. It's not the city's, city's job. It's not the city's function, a function of local government to be taking taxpayer money and redistributing it to charity. That's the local residents' responsibility to donate to charities, to serve our community. It is not the city's function to collect taxpayers and donate to charities regardless. I am a charitable person, and I donate. I, I, I share my time, resource, time and resources generously, but it is, I am against the city continuing to take city money, taxpayer money, and donating to charities. And also, one of the, one of the, one of the agencies awarded money this, this last time operates in Madison. You know, so I, I feel a freeze of this would, would be, would be the way to go. Thank you.
All right. We have one registered speaker, Ari Lowe. So if you want to come up and push the button, and, oh, I guess the button's been pushed for you.
Hi. My name is Ari Lowe. I'm a substitute teacher in a lot of different school districts, including MMSD, including Verona area school district. However, what I really want to talk today about is our students and our young scholars. As an example of a initiative that used the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative grants, my local school, Leopold Elementary School, applied for a grant this past year. We didn't have enough money to approve all grants that were requested. They requested $15,000, just as an example, and they were awarded $8,500. Now, I was just on a meeting last night of the PFO, the parent faculty organization, previously PTA, all right, and they were saying, you know, we really don't have enough money for all of the students to get snacks. Students are going hungry in the afternoons, and, okay, camera's going weird. And as a teacher, this makes me really sad, because I know how challenging it is for teachers to teach students, especially young children, who already struggle to regulate their own emotions when they're hungry. So I want to give you just that one example as a reason why this is so important, to really prioritize our students and our young citizens, and make sure that we're providing them what they need, which includes opportunities such as those provided through the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grant. I think that it's very short-sighted to say that we shouldn't be providing a social safety net for our children. We shouldn't be providing them the snacks that they need in order to, you know, be like functioning humans in a classroom. I really want to support the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grant, increasing the funding.
All right. Thanks. Any questions, Joe?
Yeah, this is just a point of clarification to the first statement under the rationale. Can, Chad, can you clarify that? Or, or mayor, can you clarify the statement about funds being, operating in Madison? I just don't understand the details of it, and I'd like clarity.
I can explain. So maybe you can chime in.
Yeah.
So, yes, there are some organizations, non-for-profit organizations, that they are not locally from Fitchburg, but they are from Madison, but they are do a lot of activity in, in Fitchburg neighborhoods. And when those organizations need to report to us, you know, you look at their grant reports and the requirement, David, you know, they have to report to us and let us know if they are serving the demographic here in Fitchburg. And also they need to, you know, because even though they operate, I'm going to give you an example. The Big Brother, Big Sister is one of the organizations that we, that we award some of the money. And they do a lot of activity in some of the North Fitch Hatchet Road area. So they, they had to submit, when they submit the report, they need to tell us, okay, how many children they support in the, in those neighborhoods. So this is part of the grant requirement. So, so there are other non-for-profit also, like the Latino Academia Workforce Development is another organization that is located in Madison, but it does a lot of activity in one of the, the healthy neighborhood area. So we have the Boys and Girls Club that is Fitchburg-located, and they provide services in Fitchburg. So also, we give money to the Badger Prairie Needs Network. They are located in the town of Verona, but also they assist 70% of the people that go to the food pantry that are Fitchburg residents. So the, it doesn't mean from where the, the non-for-profit is located is where the, the service is located. And it had to be, of course, in Fitchburg, specifically in one of the healthy neighborhood areas. So we keep track of that. So this is a requirement.
Joe?
Yeah. So thank you for clarifying, and that's what I thought. I think in a city such as Fitchburg, which has 31,000 residents and is placed in a larger community where there's a lot of fluidity, people work and live in different places, and particularly, you know, most of our H&amp;I neighborhoods border Madison, I, I think it's, it's somewhat disingenuous to hold it against an organization that they are based in the city of Madison, just given what the grant spells out and what the heart of it is. Also, I know from having worked at the Boys and Girls Club, the parking lots in Madison, the buildings in Fitchburg, you know, you're going to serve kids that live in both municipalities. But, you know, when, as a former grant maker, you know, when you distribute funds to an organization, the, those funds are supposed to serve residents of that city, but there's so much fluidity that it's hard to completely guarantee that that happens every time. So I, I just, I, I disagree with this first rationale. Overall, I'm opposed to the amendment, but I just want to pay particular attention to that, because I don't think it's fair to hold it against a nonprofit because they are not located in Fitchburg. We'd really be limiting ourselves and the work of this grant to do that.
All right. Yeah, I, I couldn't be more opposed to this amendment. Mainly, it's because when we did the awards last year, when the H&amp;I committee did the awards last year, there were a bunch of programs that we couldn't support because there, you know, there were, there were more requests. And these, the, the organizations that are doing this work, they're, they're in our neighborhoods. They aren't, you know, it's not like we're providing services for some, for some program that's far away from here. It's, they are serving Fitchburg children and Fitchburg neighborhoods with the programs that they do. We will be getting in January reports from each of the organizations that were awarded a grant in 2024. And these, the, the organizations that are doing this work, they're, they're in our neighborhoods. They aren't, you know, it's not like we're providing services for some, for some program that's far away from here. It's, they are serving Fitchburg children and Fitchburg neighborhoods with the programs that they do. We will be getting in January reports from each of the organizations that were awarded a grant in 2023 that will describe who they served, what they did, and how they, how it impacted the neighborhoods. And these, you know, it's not just going to be a one-page report. Last year, some of the reports we got from those organizations were quite detailed as to what they did. So I, I really think that this is a program that's, it's one of the things we do that's working. It's working to help people, and it's doing good things in these neighborhoods. So, so I will be opposing this amendment. Julia?
Yeah, so I know, so I want to clarify that I adding, yes, $50,000 more to this program this year, but it's from, as you remember, we have $100,000 allocated in the ARPA, an investment plan. It was an amendment that I put, I don't remember when, last year, and this body approved it. So there is a bucket there with $100,000 funds for, dedicated to the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. What I am doing is allocating $50,000 of that money to this cycle, to the 2024 cycle. And the idea is to bring the other $50,000 for the 2025 cycle. So, so that money was already approved to use for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. So what I am doing now is I'm moving the money from that bucket and to put it in action for 2024.
All right, anything else, Dave? Any other comments on your amendment?
Just, you know, I have to, I have to comment. This is not a function of local government, you know, to fund charities. I, I am, I'm not saying I'm not for the charities. I'm very much for them. I donate to them in a united way and personally, you know, this is, this is one of the things that's very strong for me that I support these things. But it is not a function of local government to take taxpayers' money and redistribute it to charities, you know. I'm, I'm also, you know, I appreciate, appreciate the problems teachers will have with, with children, you know, if they don't, you can't lay that on me. The schools, that's a school function. Don't be mixing, the county provides the safety net. Don't be mixing every, every, the more layers you add to this thing, it's, it's, I just, it's not a function of local government. If you, if you've studied the structure of government and the function of the different branches, local, county, state, you would see that this is, this is not the, this is not what we should be doing. We should be asking our taxpayers, our residents to donate to, to provide these services and not taking it out of their, taking, you know, forced out of their pockets. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, Gabriella?
I'll be brief. I just, the city, our city's function is to provide services to residents. And some things we aren't very good at, and some things nonprofit organizations are very good at. So I think being able to provide these grants to organizations that do what they do very well and provide services to the, to our residents that we're not able to provide, I think has, has a lot of value. And, you know, we do provide a lot of services that are not what you might think are as core functions. You know, we provide senior center services. We provide a social worker that does work through the police department. We do all sorts of things that, that's human services oriented. And so I fully support H and I. I think it's just one element of what we can do to serve our residents.
Julia?
Yes, I think Gabriella mentioned some of the stuff that I want to say. But also, I want to mention that if we follow that logic, we shouldn't be funding the library. We shouldn't be funding the senior center. The senior center has three social workers. So we shouldn't be funding all of that if we, if we, if we are following Dave's logic.
All right. Any other comments on this? Then we shall move on. So we will go to Amendment Six, which is Gabriella's. And did you want to bring two in at the same time? Or how did you want to do your discussion here?
I'll cover six, and then I can briefly cover two because I think it'll kind of naturally flow.
Okay.
Okay, so Amendment Number Six is to add a career firefighter inspector. This is something that I put together after it was made clear during that council meeting before budget amendments were due, where we had that extra money coming in through general transportation aid, and therefore it freed up $125,000 in levy limit capacity, in operating levy limit capacity, distinct from that hub operating, just because they're the same number. They're actually different amounts of money, just to clarify. So I took a look at the staff requests that were available. Since that amount of money, over $100,000, you can actually hire a staff member with that amount of money. So I took a look at the staff requests and the amount of money we had available to play with. One of the, one of the 2024 requests was for an additional career firefighter for a total cost of $116,000, which is within that amount of money. I think this is a great use. I think many of the alders are aware of this, but I guess I can say it again for anyone in the public that is watching. There has been an overtime crisis in the fire department for a very long time. And this year has been by far the worst year ever. And they had over 8,000 hours of overtime just in the first three quarters of the year. Just, and that all falls onto the, the career firefighters, the people that are full-time. Some of these guys are working, you know, seven days straight and then going right into a next, next day. They're, they're working ridiculous hours. It's stressful for them. It's stressful for their families. That's the foremost, my concern. But the other concern too is that paying overtime pay is incredibly expensive. Overtime pay is time and a half. So it's an incredible expense to the city. And if you'll recall, we actually had to pass a budget amendment to use some money in vacancy savings, I believe, to, to, to pay hundreds of thousands over what we anticipated in overtime expenses because of that overtime. So not only is this, you know, a morale issue, a burnout issue for our firefighters, it's also an incredible hit to our budget this year and potentially in future years. So we did add a career firefighter back in October, and that continues into next year. But that doesn't, that's not going to fix the overtime issue. That's not even going to come close to fixing the issue. So I think because we have the capacity to add an additional staff member, I think we should put it into the firefighting department. I think there's potential for, over the course of the year, this to actually save money because you're reducing those overtime hours. And I think it'll go a long way towards approving the morale of the department, especially after this year that has been absolutely brutal on our firefighters.
All right, I see that Joe is here from the fire department. Would you like to weigh in on this before we get into our discussion?
I would be happy to, to address some of the overall issues that we're seeing from a staffing perspective. If we look back at the history of the Fitchburg Fire Department since 1994, we had discussed the potential of eventually increasing our staff to the point where we were predominantly career-based. And, you know, going into this 30 years later, we are still predominantly part-time based. We have very little in the way of capacity, very little way of depth when it comes to our career staff. So when we have an issue where we have either firefighters that have been injured or they're out on FMLA, there are people who may call in sick. All of these things have a direct impact on overtime and our ability to staff. So eventually, what we need to be able to do from a staffing perspective is to address the overall staffing plan, which is to become predominantly career. And by that, I mean, right now, we are about 25% career, 75% paid-on-call, paid-on-premises. We'd love to be able to flip those numbers. I still see extreme value in having a combination department, especially since we have a tendency of training the fire service, and it becomes a, a natural pipeline for our membership as we bring people in and we're able to provide education and experience. But it has to start somewhere, and it has to gradually build based on the budget limits that we know exist with levy limits and expenditure restraint. So we're trying to think about ways that we can address our overall overtime issue and just the number of hours that career staff is putting in, in general. So the staffing plan was intended to address a lot of that, and this is one answer or one option as far as gradually being able to address the staffing issues that we're seeing.
All right, any questions? Bill?
Maybe just some clarification from Misty. I saw on your finance director notes, you're saying that, you know, roughly 2,800 hours of this would be due to the fact that the standard work week for a firefighter was decreased from 52 to 48 hours in 2023, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's for the full year of 2023. The 8,000 in the description above is for the first three quarters of the year. So we can imagine that roughly 8,000 will be the over and above amount for the full year, probably. Is that right?
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of different things that go into that statement. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, the, the schedule has changed from what amounts to about a 52-hour work week to a 48-hour work week. That actually is in lockstep with what was approved for Fitch Rona about four years ago. So as we went to address the overall working conditions for our firefighting staff that reside in the same stations as Fitch Rona, we were trying to address the, the work schedule so it was comparable and that our firefighters were working similar hours. It did have an impact. We do see there being value in addressing the overall efficiency of operation between the two organizations, and those are discussions that need to happen in the future. But one of the things that we looked at from a work week perspective is we know from a labor situation that those would be bargainable conditions, and it's one less thing that we would have to bargain if, in the event that we become one big happy family in the future. So the 48 hours was in respect to some of the things that we have been seeing on the labor side within public safety for a while with firefighters and paramedics that work in the same building. So, long story short, and, and please help me remember the entirety of your question so that I can answer it.
Yeah, I just don't want people to compare the 8,000 with the 2,800 when the 8,000 represents only three quarters of the year. So for the full year, it's probably more like, you know, 10,500 to 11,000 hours. And then, you know, so the 2,800 hours referenced by Misty, you know, that's, you're probably talking about an additional 8,000 hours beyond that by the time the year is out.
And it all depends on what we're going to be seeing as far as people being off. We had four people off on FMLA at one time. So it was not consistent with what we were seeing from year to year. That's why it wasn't predictable and why you're seeing the overage in the overtime. It's, if, if we had a little bit more in the way of depth, we would be able to address that. But our minimum staffing is our maximum staffing. We put nine people on a day. And, and when somebody calls in sick, those seats have to be filled.
Okay, so the, so then it's, it's possible that we're not going to continue, we can't just extrapolate the 8,000 to, you know, 10,700 or whatever by the end of the year because people are back from FMLA?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be spending more from the overtime budget, no doubt, because there's always going to be overtime issues with, with a number of different things that, that fall into play. Another thing that we have to take into consideration is our part-time paid-on-premises workforce is going down. And we've seen that trend downward for the past 10 years. So whereas our paid-on-call, paid-on-premises employee used to fill those seats, and when they're not available, that's when we have to mandate our, our career force. And that's where you start seeing more overtime. So yes, there will be more overtime throughout the end of the year. It's probably not at the rate that we saw the first three quarters of the year.
Okay. Anything else, Gabriella?
That's all. I mean, I'm interested to hear if people, what people have to say, if they're willing to share before we move on. But, but yeah, I think, I think I made it clear where, where I stand. I think this is a good use of that additional levy limit capacity.
Okay, Julia?
I agree that this, that this is using the extra money for this position.
All right. And then Amendment Two, you want to just walk us through that quick? Gabriella?
Can I, can I, can I speak here?
Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. I was hearing voices. Go ahead.
No, just a, a comment and a question. And, you know, the, as the chief mentioned, the overtime this year was unprecedented. But I think we need to keep that in mind. We had, firefighters had a number of bad accidents that happened on recreational activities or away from home. You know, we, we don't expect that to happen. You know, are we going to have a firefighter break his leg waterskiing every year? I kind of doubt it, you know. So it's a little bit artificial. But the question I have, I'm not opposed to this, but where will the money come from in the following year to pay for this position?
Misty?
Yeah, so the, this 125,000 that Gabriella was referencing is the Omnibus Amendment Number C or Letter B, sorry? That is an ongoing increase in aid. So that will be expected to continue at least into '25 and beyond.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And I can just add one thing. Like, if you add up the FMLA hours and the hours that were increased based on the change in the work week, there was still 3,500 hours of overtime in the first three quarters of the year, even if you subtract out those, those two contributing factors. It's just an extraordinary amount of overtime, and even under normal conditions. And again, like I said, it's very expensive to pay overtime, and, and, and it is burning out our employees. We have some firefighters that have been with us for, for 30-some years, and I personally do not want to lose those individuals because I do think that makes our community less safe when we lose people with that, with that depth of experience. And I do think that the department has been driven to that, to that point because of how stressful this year has been. They will still have to do overtime, even if we add an addition. But I think it'll, it'll go a long way towards, towards making this a sustainable amount of overtime.
I think anybody that's been around municipal government for a while has seen the changing landscape of public safety and how we need to be able to address the overall need moving forward, not just look at what we did 20 years ago, because what we did 20 years ago isn't working for us today.
Well, 20 years ago, some of us were pointing out that we're going to need to move to a full-time department sooner than later. And there just wasn't a lot of interest in making it happen before. So, and you're right, we're going to always have a hybrid model here. But, you know, the difficulty that the department has had in recruiting paid-on-call people is just getting worse and worse. And I, I hope that we never reach a point where we eliminate them, but they might just not be there as a result of attrition overtime. I mean, I remember when our paid-on-call roster had over 100 people on it, and I don't think we're anywhere close to that now.
We are not. And, and the other thing that we're taking into consideration is over 95% of our firefighters reside outside of the city of Fitchburg, whereas 30 years ago, we had a number of firefighters that lived inside the city. So they were able to respond in. And let's also look at the fact that the number of responses that we went on were, were less. I mean, we had fewer responses every year. There was limited impact on the family unit. Now that impact is becoming more significant. So we're, we're taking all of that into consideration. And the, the staffing perspective, what we're seeing on a part-time and volunteer trend is nationwide. That's not unique to Fitchburg. So it's nothing that we're doing that others aren't attempting to address at the same time, which is another valuable reason to be able to address our workforce.
Julia?
Yes, so what I want to add also is like, if you look at the, the chief staffing plan that he put together this summer, you know, the idea is to start working on that plan to convert the 25 full-time career now, 75 paid-on-call, start reversing that. And in order to do that, I think this, if we add, you know, adding an extra firefighter now, we are, we are moving the needle to, to start making progress towards that goal that I fully support, and I hope that we can achieve in the next five years, you know. The, it's, the paid-on-call is good to have like a, you know, is a pipeline of future firefighters, you know what I mean? So always, it will be good to have that, you know, pipeline, 25%, you know, the goal. But, but the idea is how we need to start making progress to our, that goal, to start reversing that ratio.
We are always going to have people that are new to the profession that need education and experience, and that's a perfect place to place our paid-on-call, paid-on-premises, which is why I agree with you, Jay, that it, it is a model that we can sustain for the long term.
All right. Gabriella, you want to talk about Number Two?
Yes, Amendment Number Two is to reduce fire department overtime. To be honest, I would be okay if this amendment didn't pass because I think conservatively it'd be good to keep all the overtime that's budgeted. However, acknowledging that I didn't know what other amendments were going to come through, and because we have a limited amount of levy limit capacity, I did want to offer an amendment to reduce the overtime if that was what we needed to do to meet levy limits and keep that, that position. I think it's important to add the position, and I was, I was going to offer the overtime reduction to make that happen. But I, I think we kind of have reduction to make that happen, uh, but I, I think we kind of have to see how it plays out on the night and how much money we have available to work with. So while I think this is, I want this on the table, I think we should also consider maybe not passing it or rescinding it, uh, if we can, we can keep that, that amount of money in the budget.
Jim?
I'm uncomfortable with actually taking away overtime, um, right now. In my prior profession, you know, we always say give us more people, overtime be reduced, and it really, not many times that, that occurred. Um, plus I think in the mayor's budget, he wants to expand parental leave, and I think that can be a driver of overtime also depending on, you know, um, what happens within that, um, department. So I would be very hesitant to take that money out right now.
All right. Any other questions? All right, let's move on to another of Gabriella's, number seven.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so number seven is add funding for changes to transit system. Um, this is another thing that came up late because of that change, uh, where we had an additional $127, $125,000 in levy that capacity that came up late. In Transportation and Transit Committee, we've been discussing an intercity transit feasibility study for well over a year. Um, we set aside money for it in last year's budget through vacancy savings, but we did not have a transportation engineer for, I don't know, it was over nine months. So we didn't have somebody to take over that, that study and put out an RFP. Um, so that process is finally underway. Our, our transportation engineer has an RFP, is, is putting it out to do a transit study. And so that intercity transit feasibility study was going to look at three elements. Number one, um, some sort of transit to the civic campus, some sort of maybe private transit, ride, ride share, something of that nature. Number two, changes to our bus line to improve, um, access in the city or access to the civic campus. And number three, park and rides as an option, um, which I guess would include transit, uh, to and from those park and rides. So kind of looking at the feasibility of that, what it would cost, um, will give us some, just some more information to work off of. I know we've had a long discussion in the past about the senior center, the difficulty of getting to the senior center, the possible need for an additional bus or, um, or something of that nature to get people to the, to the campus. So all those things have been discussed in the past. So I don't know what the, what the feasibility study is going to say, um, but we should have a report in early, early next year. So I think there is an opportunity here to have a little bit of money on the table to make changes in 2024 based on those recommendations. And I'll give you an example of a potential change that could be made. Um, when, in the last month, or not, yeah, it was a couple of weeks ago, um, Madison Metro came and did a presentation on Bus Rapid Transit, and they showed, uh, the potential BRT line, um, that goes on Fish Hatchery, and they actually had the Bus Rapid Transit go past McKee Road, turn on that, on that, um, on Brendan Avenue, and then go back up to McKee and then back up Fish Hatchery. So it brings that, that, that bus line down past McKee Road, um, and kind of gives access to that area, the Chapel Valley area with lots of senior residences, McKee Farms Park. It brings the bus line a little bit further down. That's something that's long-term part of the Bus Rapid Transit. Now, there is a bus line, Bus Line B, that already follows that general line, but it doesn't extend that far. So there might be a possibility of extending Bus Route B right now, having them go a little bit farther. I'm not even convinced that it would even take that much more time on the bus schedule, and maybe it wouldn't even be that much of a cost to us depending on how, how it works out in terms of hours. So that's something I didn't realize until we had that discussion that that was even a possibility. Madison Metro can make changes in the spring. They, they do like two, two phases of changes, so that's something they could be considered. But again, if we don't have money on the table to, to even, um, look at those options, then those won't be on the table until 2025. So given the fact that we had a little bit of flexibility in the, in the, in the levy, I thought it'd be worthwhile to put some money on the table for this. That being said, 50,000 is, is just a guess. We can change this amount, uh, quite significantly on budget night, depending on how things go, um, but I do think it would be great to have at least some money available for this.
Before I get to you, I want to have Misty kind of explain the note that she put in here.
Which one? The first one?
Well, yeah.
So I, I included that because there was a comment in the rationale that the, the additional general transportation aid would be a good match for this additional transit funding. I just wanted to make sure it's clear that the transit fund, or the transit costs that we have are not included in the formula for that GTA aid. So by increasing transit, does it mean that we'll get more general transportation aid?
Got you. Uh, Joe?
Um, Alder Gerhart, I may be getting in the weeds here, but, um, would, uh, two things, I'm wondering if a study would include, um, would it include sort of like best times for a route? Just because I'm thinking about when people would be coming to the various buildings on the civic campus, and then would it also include, um, public input and feedback just to get a sense for what ridership may be and when would be ideal, um, and what sort of frequency of routes would be ideal?
In my personal opinion, yes. I, I would like to keep this amendment as flexible as possible, and so I, I kind of put language in there that, um, it would be informed, the funding, sorry, in, in the description, it says, "The use of this funding will be informed by the coming intercity transit feasibility study and/or input from public work staff." So in my, in my view, I think this money hopefully, uh, could be used by public work staff to do anything, changes to the transit system that they decide, even if it's not explicitly stated in the transit feasibility study. I did want there to be flexibility. So yes, those two examples, I think, would be included under the, uh, under the spirit of the amendment.
Julia?
Yes, this question is for Misty. I thought that we, uh, allocated last year some money for this interest, that this feasibility transit study. Do we have, how much is?
Yep, the study itself is funded, and that's the study that Gabriella was talking about is in progress right now. The amendment she's talking about is to implement the items from the study. So yes, there was money last year. Was it, Gabriella, do you know, was it 25,000 for the study?
25,000. 25,000. I'm sorry, did you hear me? 25,000 is yes, that's the amount.
So, uh, can you explain more about what is the implementation that we want to do with this?
We don't know yet because the study isn't done.
This is what I said, this, I want to understand what we're doing here with this.
I think the most likely, I mean, to be, to be honest, I think the most likely, uh, applications of this would be a change to the bus route in some way, one of the bus routes, and not necessarily Bus Route B, but maybe some other part of the city. Um, or it could potentially be maybe like a pilot of, of a ride share service or more investigation into what that would look like. Those would be a couple of guesses as to what this could potentially be used for. To be honest, I, I, those are just guesses, and I, and that's just based on what, what discussions we've had in the past. And I, I'm very open to the, the, the idea that, um, the study could turn up something that we don't expect. So, um, so I, I meant, I very intentionally kept this somewhat vague.
All right.
Can I add something?
Go ahead.
So my question is, because when I, when, for me, implementation of something is, a $50,000 is not enough money to implement anything. So this is what I am, I, I want to understand what we're trying to implement here, so that's it.
Yeah. Oh, it's a good question. So I, I actually, I don't know for sure how much a, a slight extension of a bus route or a change in a bus route, an increase in frequency would cost, but, you know, considering our entire Madison Metro budget, um, $50,000 is a pretty significant proportion of that. Um, even $20,000 is a pretty significant percentage of that. So I think there is potential for there to be a significant change to a bus route that would fall within that amount of money. Um, I can't say for certain, we'd have to actually have that discussion, but I think it's, I would really like this money to be on the table because if it's not on the table, then there's no opportunity to, to implement anything in, in the year 2024, which I think would be a, a loss.
Chad?
I was just going to add that, uh, as a reminder to council, I am engaged in conversation with Madison Metro to get cost estimates for service expansions related to the Route 65 and 75 predominantly. Uh, those are two east-west routes, although I believe the 75 also does come down Fish Hatchery Road as well. So, um, I met with them a couple of weeks ago. Uh, unfortunately, they did not have, uh, cost estimates available at that time, so we're still on it. And once we have that information, we'll be happy to provide it to council so you have a better idea of what it might cost for some route expansions.
Go ahead.
So I want to make another comment is because if we do any implementation, it's going to be, you know, if we decide to use the money for an implementation in one year, if we want to continue the following year, it's, this is, it's not one-time expense. So that one is my other concern about what we're trying to do with this, you know what I mean? Because this is an implementation, I mean, that if we take this, because you mentioned that you want to take this $50,000 for the 125,000 capacity that we have now, um, for the transportation aid, but, you know, um, so we are using that transportation aid capacity to, to fund the firefighter position. So this is what I am trying to understand is.
No, I, yeah, I, so, I mean, there's also that $17,000 of levy limit capacity that was available before that change was made. So by my understanding, there's 142,000 or so dollars of levy limit capacity for operating expenses. And there's another 125,000 that if we pass that first amendment, we just, we could use for one-time costs. So I, yes, if we pass the firefighter, which is a higher priority for me, we would not be able to do this amount of money, but perhaps we could do something lower, um, depending on what offsets pass as well, because there are some offsets that are, that are proposed as well. So honestly, I think we'll have to make changes on, on budget night. Obviously, we have to stay within that 142,000 or so money for operating costs. I do not want to dip into the hub costs, the hub of reserve costs at all. That's not my intention. So, um, I would intend to amend this on the night, catch those, fit within those complex.
Okay, so now it makes sense, okay. Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, uh, transit feasibility study is actually, you know, looking at three aspects. One is an intercity shuttle, which could be something of a one-time expense, and one of the others is additional park and rides, which could also be, you know, one-time expenses, setting something like that up. So it's not just operational costs for a, for a bus necessarily.
Well, I think an intercity shuttle would be an ongoing expense.
It would, but, you know, the purchase of a vehicle is something of a one-time expense.
Well, that would be if, if we were going to operate it as the city of Pittsburgh, but I suspect when all's said and done, it will turn out to be better to have Madison Metro operated. Just, just because they've already got the infrastructure with the drivers and the equipment and everything, and they, they wouldn't, but I don't know. I mean, we'll find out.
My only point is that there are items in here that could be considered one-time expenses.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion on this? Okay. Uh, with that, we will move on to amendment number eight.
Which is also me.
Yes, Gabriella.
Okay, so amendment number eight is increase revenue allocation to the Community Wellbeing Fund. Uh, I'm going to have to back up a little bit because this was something that was created, uh, during the 2021 budget process back in 2020, and I know a lot of people on the council now were, were not on council back then. Um, so what I did back in that budget was I allocated a percentage of the court penalties and fines revenue stream to go into an account called the Community Wellbeing Fund. Um, and I liked the idea of setting aside a percentage because that fines and, um, fines and penalties revenue stream can vary a lot year to year. So we budgeted the amount in somewhat conservative, we budgeted for 165,000 this year, that could come in at 200,000. So tying it to a percentage means that you can add a little bit more, uh, to the budget than you might anticipate. Uh, and I liked the idea of doing this specifically for court penalties and fines, because I feel like if we're issuing a lot of fines, that indicates, um, that indicates maybe something unhealthy in the community, but if you take a portion of that money and reinvest it in the community, uh, maybe that, that will help improve and reduce those fines over time. So I kind of see it as taking that money, um, that was a penalty and reinvesting it back in the community to make us healthier. Um, so it was set at 3.5% back then, and it's been at the same rate for the entire, uh, the entire, since then. Um, I've always intended to increase the amount, um, so that we're getting that variable amount of money going into the fund. I personally think there's some potential for us to allocate, uh, percentage of this money at the rate where we can, um, have a variable amount of money going to the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, you know, uh, effort. Um, but it could be a little bit more, a little bit less year to year depending on how it's coming in, but, um, but that's something for the future. That's something for, for the future to consider. So anyway, I, I would like to increase the revenue for the Community Wellbeing Fund. I, this does have a levy, levy limit impact because we allocate all of that money to operating expenses, so we'd have to reduce some of that to the other operating expenses. So that's why, um, we're going to consider the second amendment as well, which is to actually, uh, take HNI grant funding out of this fund. So basically, it offsets the levy limit impact, um, while keeping the percentage. And I, again, I, I think the percentage is valuable because if we take in a lot more fines and penalties than we anticipate, we'll actually get more money than if we just allocated, um, that's flat amount in the budget. I hope that makes sense, um, but I'm happy to clarify and answer questions if anyone, uh, is still confused based on my explanation.
Uh, all right, any questions on this? Um, it, this seems, what have we, Misty, what have we used, um, this well-being fund for in the past?
We've only used, so it is relatively new. 2021 budget was when it was first created. We used it for the first time in 2023 to spend $15,000 of HNI grants specifically for Southdale.
It almost seems like, uh, it almost seems like what we're doing here is kind of redundant, like maybe we should eliminate the Wellbeing Fund and just put the money into HNI if that's where we want it to go. That would seem to make more sense than having to juggle this around in the way that, uh, these two amendments are trying to do it. And we, we may, there may not be anything we can do to fix that for 2024. Maybe this is something that we look ahead to the 2025 budget. Joe?
Uh, yeah, I guess a follow-up to that is, um, were there intended uses outside of kind of HNI functions when this fund was created? I don't know if anybody can speak.
Can I respond?
Please do.
Okay, great. Um, so ultimately, like when I created this fund, I meant it to be a little bit flexible. My hope was that the, the HNI committee would become permanent, and that, and then that committee could use this as sort of a, a fund to, to do what they, what they want with. So that might be grant funding, but I think it could be other things, uh, but I would want it to be informed by a public process. I, I don't think I, as the creator of the fund, should, to dictate what it's used for, except for like, obviously, a general idea. Um, so yes, right now, the HNI is sort of, in terms of expenses, is sort of dedicated to the grant initiative. But now that it looks like we're going to be making this more of an official, long-term thing, especially with the addition of the staff member, the community, I can't remember the name of the, the community development staff member that we're hiring in this budget. Um, I think there's potential to expand what this fund could be used for. Um, I kind of see it the way that, the inspiration for it was actually SITA. You know, SITA has that hotel tax fund that comes in. It's a little bit different every year depending on how many taxes is collected, but that fund is set aside, and then it's used for community and economic development purposes throughout the year. I kind of see this in the same way. We divert some money. I think ideally, we divert money one year, and then we use that in the following years. There's like, we save up money and then we can use it in the future. That would be how I would like to see this go long-term. Um, I don't think we should just utilize it the money year to year. That being said, I felt like I had to do that, the offset in this budget, just because it's tight. Um, I thought it'd be better to do an offset and keep it levy, uh, neutral, but I would love for us to just increase the allocation and then let the, um, the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Committee make decisions about maybe other expenses that they could use it for. So I hope that kind of gives you a little bit more background.
By the way, while we're, uh, what, just an indirect comment, uh, based on this amendment, the city of Pittsburgh, I believe that number is correct, takes in about 160, 170,000 dollars in fines and forfeitures every year.
It's been declining pretty rapidly, uh, but that is the budgeted amount for '24.
That's stuff like speeding tickets and parking violations and, you know, whatever other tickets we write. So I know there's a misconception in the community that cities just write these tickets to raise revenue. Our city budget is in the area of $30 million. So this $170,000 isn't even a drop in the bucket. And, um, I just, you know, the purpose of the fines is to help get people to comply with the ordinances that we write. Um, it's not just to find ways to raise money because if we were going to raise money, we would have to raise our fines a lot more than they are right now. Anyhow, uh, so Gabrielle going with, uh, that amendment and amendment one, which was to, to basically, uh, remove the, um, that line item for HNI from the tax levy, uh, even though it's going to go back in the tax levy in a different way. Does that sound about right?
That's exactly what it is. Yeah, so it would be changing the funding source for HNI grant. This is amendment number one, changing the funding source for some, for a portion of HNI grant funding to the Community Wellbeing Fund, uh, and the intention of that specific- And the intention of that specifically to make this levy limit neutral.
All right. Any other questions on that? Misty, when we do the council agenda where we take, where we take up all these amendments, can we like reorder them? I know they all have numbers assigned to them now, but can we, can we reorder them on the agenda so that these ones that are related to each other can be taken together? It just seems like it would be a little easier than having motions to amend the agenda and all that.
Because ultimately, if that's what is being directed to us by the people that are putting the agenda together, we can. But yes, they do have a number and that's, will remain the order that the packet is in, just because it's already created.
All right. I think I heard Dave piping in.
Yeah. Well, the comment, comment I'd make is, you know, it costs us money to have our police officers and fire whatever, you know, enforce these ordinances. It costs, it's extra time. We have a court and we have to pay for Judge, Judge Hamdi, you know, and, and so I, you know, and that's the extra time it takes us to enforce these and the judge, that's more than 170. I feel all that money should go back to, to pay the cost that, you know, of our departments to, to, you know, enforce the laws and, and, you know, our, our court system to deal with that. I, I think that's, it's very noble to say we're going to give it to Healthy Neighborhoods and that'll make, make irresponsible drivers responsible. But I, I, I don't, I don't hold out much hope that that will be successful. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on amendment eight or amendment one?
No.
All right. Amendment nine. Gabriella.
Okay, amendment nine is to add a human resources intern. I was taking a look at what the possibilities were for the budget. Obviously, there's limited amounts, but interns tend to be pretty minimal expenses, but can have a good impact on, a positive impact on the city and a positive impact on our staff. The only intern request for the 2024 budget was the human resources intern for a total cost of $8,897. I did speak with our HR director, and this can be considered a one-time cost because that intern will likely be a summer intern that will have a discrete project with an endpoint. She did tell me that those, those potential projects would either help with potential recruitment for new city staff or with a mentoring program to develop our city staff that we currently have, which I think are, are positive things. I think it's something that we can do with the, with the money we have available to us. And I think honestly, our human resources staff does a lot with very little in terms of the amount of staffing capacity that they have. So I think giving them a chance to, to do an extra project on the side with, with a, with a great intern, I think would be a, a good use of a relatively small amount of money.
All right. Any questions?
Oh, sorry. I think this is a great idea. And also, I was reading the rationale and I, I really love the, the initiative, the youth job shadow event. You know, I think this is great to invite young people from the community to learn about career. And I think that, you know, this is great. So I hope you full support this.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm going to support this one also. I, as you'll recall in my little list, my little wish list for the referendum, I had added a HR staff because they're just way understaffed and with all the vacancies that we've had, we need, we need help. So whatever help we can give that department would be great. Joe?
Yeah, and I think just given our HR directors kind of reach out, active outreach into the community, some of the aspects listed in this, the, the job shadowing event, for example, could be supported by local organizations. So I think that could also add capacity to the impact of the, the intern.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. In that case, we will move on to amendment 10, which is mine. So this one is to increase the Senior Center Public Information and Education Budget. And this is $2,000 to add to the number of newsletters that the Senior Center is able to send out. And basically, this comes down to the, the, the growth in the city, especially the addition of Southdale. There's just a lot more bodies, a lot more bodies that need to have access to the Senior Center. And many of those people don't have direct computer access. So the printed things that the Senior Center says, sends to them is of great value. Jill, I see you're online. Would you like to make any other comments about it?
Thanks, Jay. No, you kind of summed it up. We, you know, we went away from mailing newsletters years ago and thinking, you know, the online presence and people just picking it up, that we wouldn't need as many copies, but we're finding that we actually need more. And we're just really increasing our outreach by delivering them to all the new senior apartments, as well as we do the coffee shops, some of the medical clinics, grocery stores. It's just still a really critical way to reach people that don't want to be online or can't be online. So it's pretty important. And, and as I noted there, we do a really good job of bringing in income. We used to have to recruit sponsors, advertisers in our newsletter, and we don't have to do that anymore. People come to us wanting to advertise. So it's a pretty secure funding source for us too. So that's it.
All right. Any discussion on that? I'm not seeing anything. All right. Then we'll move on to item 11, which is Alder Jetzer.
Yeah, this amendment would increase the number of TTC meetings per year from 10 to 12. For those of you who maybe need a reminder, Steve Arnold is now the chair, and this is, transportation is one of his passions. And there's an awful lot of things that we could do. And meetings tend to run long. And anything that's referred out to TTC, you know, there's that two months out of the year when we wouldn't be able to get back to the council for an extra whole month.
All right. Any discussion on that? Gabriella?
May I speak?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dave, and then we'll get Gabriella.
I would just say, I would, I would encourage the TTC to stay at 10 meetings and get their business, business done. I would tell you, when Steve Arnold was appointed to TTC, if we had known he was going to be made chairman, we probably would have denied, nothing against him personally, but we would have probably not approved that. I would encourage you to stay at the 10 meetings, get your business, get your business done and respect the, you know, the time of the other, other members. Other, other committees get their, get their work done and, you know, the number of, required number of meetings. I, I think you should, I think you should focus on staying at 10. That's all.
All right, Gabriella.
Yeah, my only concern about increasing to 12 is I, I do think it's good for staff to be able to have a couple of months off from staffing those meetings. You know, it's a lot of work. I, I think it's a lot of work behind the scenes that we don't even realize to get prepared for those meetings. And I do think it's nice for them to have a couple of months off from that. And that being said, you know, I know that the TTC has some, some goals. I, I know RCC has a lot of community outreach events that they do. And so they actually have a, an outreach subcommittee that meets separately to kind of plan those, those events and gets, get into more of those details because we don't have time during the, the standard meetings to do that. And maybe TTC should consider a subcommittee to discuss some of those things in more depth, like, I don't know, Vision Zero or something of that nature. So maybe that would be a good option. Instead of adding, adding meetings to the agenda, maybe we could create a subcommittee that can take on some of that additional work.
Before you go there, I'm not aware of subcommittees within committees. And I'll need to probably investigate that a bit because I sense there could be some transparency issues and the fact that we would need to be noticing that there's a meeting of a subcommittee of a committee. So I'll be doing a little bit of looking into that. No offense to Gabriella.
No, 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 it's fine. It's not a quorum of members, if that's your concern, just FYI. I think it's just two people, so.
Yeah, I think the problem though is if, if a committee assigns two people to work on something, even if it's not a quorum, I think that still is probably going to end up falling under the open meetings requirements because they're doing city work. But I, I don't know. We, we can look into it somewhere. Jim?
Yeah, I see the finance directors note that the building costs and other staff costs are not identified. Is there a way we can get those, Misty?
So the other staff costs, the assumption is that it can be absorbed within their existing workload without needing to do overtime? But of course, that's an assumption. The building cost is, is really hard to, to nail down.
The, the other concern I have is that some of these committees put a lot more work on staff. And I've heard from staff that sometimes, and I'll just put it out there, that these committees think that the staff just works for them and that they can go direct the staff and not go through Chad, which I, I do have an issue with. So if this is meant to talk about more things and do more things, two more months, and then that's just going to be additional work for staff, I, I really have a concern with this. So I'll just leave it at that.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move on to item 12, which is Alder Herbst's amendment, Remove Teen Center Design Study Phase Three. Dave?
Okay, so I, I feel there's options with things coming, possibly with the, I, still, still not public, but something will be coming down in that area that we could, we could have a joint use. We have the Boys and Girls Club less than a mile away. We have the Trades Training Center right there. I feel the 40,000 would be, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to teen center. I, I need to get that out there right now because I know many of you will be running out and saying this, this Grinch Herbst who hates all residents, you know. I know, I know what's said about me, but I'm for a teen center, but I think we can rent space. We have a number of places. We have the church, possibly Latino Chamber of Commerce, that we could rent space, spend the 40,000, rent space, get this concept up and going and assess that rather than spending money on looking at building designs because something, I'm confident something's going to come into the neighborhood that we can use joint use on that. And that way, we can get this dang thing up and, up and running here sooner than later. That's all.
All right. Now, before we have other questions, Ari Lowe, who was here earlier but had to leave, also was registering in opposition to this amendment. So any questions, Joe?
Yeah, just wanted to point out to the council, but also to the public watching. Currently, there is a amendment in the works, the mayor mentioned this yesterday, at the county board level for $75,000 to be able to support the capacity of this study. I know at last year's committee of the whole meeting in which we discussed the feasibility study, one comment that I heard from the previous mayor as well as several Alders was the need for the county to be able to put some skin in the game. So I just wanted to point out that that amendment is in works. It's gone through one committee at the county level and has passed. Tonight, as we speak, it's being discussed at a second committee. I think it's Personnel and Finance. And then it goes to the board in their budget discussion about a week before we pass our budget. So it sounds like there's some support on the, on the county board for it. That amendment would also put the remainder of $1 million into the cost of construction for a teen center pending the completion of this study. So I just wanted to put that all out in front of folks to show that there's, there is, you know, kind of skin in the game. And there is, you know, a proposal out there from the, you know, from the county board, which is, you know, something that's been requested by our council.
All right. Julia?
Yeah, so I want to clarify too that the, this design study phase three is also, doesn't mean that we are going to analyze the different options. It could be that we can buy a building, we can build, or we can rent a building. So we need to go through the process to determine which, which one is going to be the best option. So we don't know yet, it's, you know, what type of property we, if we are going to acquire, if we are going to rent, or we are going to build one. So I think we need to go through the, this, you know, this, this study, I would call it, to determine what is going to be the best option for the city.
Joe, before I get to you, I think Dave is trying to speak to, to us some more.
Well, I, I just want to say, you know, I, I think building is not an option. You know, there's going to be something coming there that will eliminate the need for that. I'm confident. And I want to get this up and, get this up and running. The other action thing I'm going to point out is I live in that neighborhood. I've lived there for 37 years now. I'm, I'm uniquely involved with the neighborhood down there, knowing the kids, the parents and the teens. They are not clamoring to me that, oh, we have to have a, a teen center. That is not, you know, that is not what they are telling me. They're telling me, keep my neighborhood clean, keep my neighborhood safe. I'm, you know, I, I, I'm in favor, a favor of renting a space. I think we should move ahead with that. And it'll, you know, it'll prove itself that the concept is, is good. And then it, if it's proven, you know, it's getting a ton of use, we need more, then we can evaluate the options. Let's get it up and running. I'm tired of, tired of talking about it.
All right.
Just one more piece of context as well. After, you know, quite a bit of delay because of staff shortages, the city is kind of in negotiation with the vendors for this year's part of that feasibility study. And, you know, I don't want to speak prematurely on things that are kind of in discussion, but I, the estimates that I've heard is that probably within the next couple of months, this phase two of the study will be, will begin. And I just want to say that there's momentum happening right now. And also just to point out that this is part of a plan that our council has approved in the CIP for the previous three years. So if, if, if this, and, and the fourth in our last CIP. So this is something that's gotten support from the city. And again, it's gotten support from the public. And the first community engagement study showed overwhelming support by both youth and adults for this space. And it was a very kind of well-distributed and it was a survey that had a lot of responses. And, you know, I, I would encourage folks that are, haven't read it to read the first community engagement study to kind of demonstrate what that support is publicly.
Gabriella?
Yeah, I just want to say like, I, I think, you know, all due respect, Dave. I know you do a lot in the community and I, I think that's very laudable and, and great work. But I, I think we do a study just to make sure that we get a representative part of the population to decide what, what will work. And, and I think I'll echo what, what the mayor said about potentially, maybe the study will show that we can rent a space and then maybe that would be sufficient. I don't think that's out of the question to consider that as part of the study. But we have discussed this extensively. And for years, there has been a lot of interest in studying this issue to get more information before we make a final decision about investing in something like this. And I know that, that if other organizations like a nonprofit or Dane County or, or any other organization wants to invest money, I'm pretty sure they're going to want to see a study. They're going to want to see something specific data before they invest something. So I think it's important to actually put the, get the study completed so that we can make the best decision going forward.
All right. I, I agree with the, the idea that this should be thought of more as a community center than a teen center, although I think it should have a significant amount of teen programming. But I completely disagree with Dave's statement that there's no support for this. Since I was first elected back in 1993, one of the things that I heard consistently from neighborhoods was that we need some things for the kids to do when they're not in school. And we, people don't understand why Madison and Oregon and Cottage And we, people don't understand why Madison and Oregon and Cottage Grove and all these other communities can support teen programming, but Fitchburg can't. So it's time that we do something. Now, the, whether we build a building for this or, or whether we remodel a building or whatever, there's still going to be some design work that has to be done. So this, so having money in the budget for a design doesn't necessarily mean we're going to build a building. It may be that we find something that is undoubtedly not going to be ready to walk in and use for a teen center or a community center. So we're going to have to do some work. And this can be used for that. But I, I think if you want to, if you want to really keep this on track and keep things moving, then let's, let's keep this in the budget. And, you know, obviously there will be a number of decisions that the council has to make prior to a single shovel being picked up. So, you know, it's not like having this in the budget means that, that something is going to happen tomorrow. As we've talked about numerous times, government takes a long time to get anything done. But hopefully, and, and this has been something that's been talked about for at least 25 years. So it's time to make something happen and I, I will be opposing this amendment as well. Any other comments on this? All right, we will move on to amendment 13, which is Jim's, Alder Wheeler.
Okay, I'll start it off and see that the chief is here and Paul Woodard is here. I, I put this amendment in because just being on the facility committee and just looking at all the information that we have now. I, I think that we got to look beyond $35 million for this facility. This has been batted around about needing a new facility since 2014. The cost has been, you know, up to 35 million, then it got reduced to 25 million. Now it's back up to 35 million. And all that time, you know, there's a lot of things cost that went up, especially for construction costs. When we got the first estimate for this building, it was $44 million to, for 78,000 square foot facility. I think it can be probably reduced to 41 million or below for a 75,000 square foot facility. But I think we need to be transparent here and let the public know that this is probably going to cost more than 35 million dollars. Police facilities are, they're expensive. There's a lot of things that go into a police facility that's going to be expensive. I got it listed here as far as evidence. Collection and storage, holding cells for arresting per, people, bullet resisting glass and walls to protect employees. And also we need a, a training bay to keep our officers up to date with training requirements. So with that being said, you know, just to close for my part of this is that I just think we just need to be pretty transparent here. And it may not go up to 41 million, but we have talked in this council a lot of times that thing, we estimate things to cost one thing. And then all of a sudden it costs a lot more than what was expected. And it just makes it seem like we don't know what we're doing when we do that. So I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to indicate I won't go into the past presentations that we've given. I think we've been very detailed in the work that's being done by many of us within the police department through engineering and having Paul Woodard, the design at the ad hoc committee, and even doing the research, doing everything we can to identify what this is going to come out to, to include a field trip. And for those of you that attended, I think it was very informative to really display what it takes to build a purpose-built building. I'm not going to be here to tell you what it's going to cost because I'm not the expert in that field. I can tell you through what I've learned in this process that 35 is not going to be enough. What that number is, I'm not the expert and maybe Paul Woodard, who's online, can help. But it is purpose-built. The, the design should be, or we're getting very close to coming up with a design and agreeing to it. And that will show the different areas that are important in this. I can tell you from the initial presentation, we've done all we could to reduce square footage already. Some area in the garage where we can potentially expand later. But the office spaces, the areas that we have, I can, I don't think we can reduce any further. If you're looking at reducing more, it would come in materials, not necessarily the square footage. That's where we're at right now. And when that presentation comes forward, we can explain that through the architect and through Paul. I, I can tell you that, you know, that what I'm learning in this process is there's a ton of hidden costs. And I call them hidden because you automatically assume that there's X amount of money that goes into building the facility. And it's not that. There's costs like in the sustainability portion and there's costs for the streets around there. When you start including that, that's what actually builds up the, the, the price in construction. And even when you look at the past sustainability portion, from what I learned was, I think, 650, 700,000, roughly around there. And now we're at 2.5 million on sustainability. So when you look at those pieces alone, the prices actually go up substantially. So I'm not here to tell you what it's going to cost. I can just tell you what I'm learning and it's not going to cost 35. I just, for some of us that want to Google what it takes to build a purpose-built facility. I read an article here in, in Madison that the Dane County Communication Center should be up by 2025. That's a 35 to 40 million dollar project for a facility that's going to be 3,400 square feet. And that's a communication center. The Fitchburg Police Department, that facility, and we have one downstairs portion that has a portion of a communication center in there. So I cannot tell you that. I just want to inform you of where some of these pieces come up. Another piece is when we talk about what this building has to be able to handle. It's an essential building for an essential function. It's a function for a, a, a piece of government that has to work 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Which means that building has to be in operation. Maybe the front door is closed to the public in the evenings, but that building has to function for the employees 24/7, 365 days a year. There's a little bit more that goes into buildings such as those. And that's my piece. I hope that Paul online can explain a little bit more about the financial piece through his expertise.
Yeah, I don't have too much more to add. Just, you know, we did have, we hired cover construction. They put the initial estimate at $44 million, as Alderman Wheeler pointed out. We did reduce the square footage down, so probably around 41 million. And we've still got a quite a bit of more work, design work to do yet to come up, you know, more refined number. But that's currently where we're, we're at, where we're at at this project cost. And as the chief pointed out, there are a lot of things. I mean, you know, the building costs, there's a lot of costs, as you mentioned, site costs, sustainability costs. There's also, you know, furniture, fees for the architect, fees for the construction manager. You know, all those things add up and that's, it does add up relatively quickly. There's been significant building inflation in the last few years. 35 million might have been a good number a few years ago, but given price increases we've seen in the last few years, I, I think 41 is probably more appropriate. I think the comment about being transparent with the number, I think the better the number you give in the budget, the better off you are next. And we actually get ready to get this next year for this project.
Gabriella?
Yeah, my, my question is to Misty, looking at, I thought that the facility was being built in 2025, based on my understanding of the timeline. So I'm confused about why this is under discussion for the 2024 budget.
So the authority to actually build the building, I think, is in 24 and 25. So I have the CIP page that I'm pulling up. Uh, so actually the second part of it is in 24 currently. So the first part of the facility was the authority for me to borrow for it was in 2023 and the rest of the facility is currently in 24. So to match with the CIP. And this is helpful because when I do go to, you know, when the contract is authorized for the bids and all of that, I have to sign it saying that the money has been, been authorized. And so having it in the 24 budget makes that authorization possible.
Jim?
So was your note supposed to say 20, 24 and not 2025?
I guess I'm not sure.
I just, I'm, yeah, your, your, your note says it, it is expected that the additional amount will be borrowed in 2025 or later. So we need to authorize it 24 to be borrowed in 2025?
So I need to have permission to borrow when we sign the contract, which I think is planned for 2024, correct? Uh, and then I actually won't borrow the money, like actually take the money from the, the people we're going to borrow it from until we know what that timeline is going to be. Because I have very strict spend down. So I'll probably borrow for some of it in 2024 and the rest of it in 2025. But I need to have authority to borrow for all of it when the contract is signed.
Jim?
Which is next year.
Correct.
Jim?
Yeah, I just want to also just add, I, I just think we should build it right the first time. I've been part of a police department where we built buildings and, you know, we wanted to kind of save money. And then we ran out of room really fast because the city's growing. We don't know what we're going to put in that building. And just to give you an example, when we went to a mental health team, that was five officers and a sergeant. We had a tough time placing those people. Then we added, um, mental health civilians, three of those. Again, that was tough. Where are we going to put them? There's other things that occurs, other units that happen. You expand and, and expand your operations and also your functions in the community. I mean, you got to have room for, for those people. And if we start just not saying we're going to just reduce the size of the building and everything else like that, we're going to end up, you know, 20 years from now, where did all the space go? You know, um, we need more room. So we might as well, I'm one person who says like, just let's build it right the first time. And so we don't have to come back to this in future years.
Julia?
Yeah, so I want to clarify something because I, I had this discussion with the chief already. So, you know, I think the, the architects and the engineer are putting together the final design with a, a close estimation of how much it costs. So this is what I am surprised, why we are rushing to put this amendment right now when we can wait two or three months and we are going to have like a, a close number of how many more millions we need. Because I don't want that then we pass this amendment and then instead of six more million, we need another more millions. And then we had to bring another budget amendment. So I don't know why we are rushing this because 24 is a 12 month. So I think we are going to have this final number soon in two or three months. Why we don't wait to see, because transparency for me is also to have some backup numbers. And so far we are guessing we need another six more million dollars. So I, you know, so what I want to be sure that when we bring, uh, we bring an amendment that is close to the final number. And we are very close to have that number. This is what I don't understand the rush to do it now. We can do it in two or three months. So that's it. I had this conversation with the chief. He knows that I was asking this question tonight because I need to ask it for the 34,000 people that we represent. But I understand that cost, you know, the 35 is not going to be enough. I get it that, you know, but I want to be sure that I think that we should bring an amendment that is close to the final number. Instead of guessing that it's going to cost maybe another five or six, maybe it's going to cost another eight million dollars. You know, I don't know. But the idea is to, because to have, you know, to bring an amendment where we have more meat with numbers behind. And so far is, this is an estimation. That's it. I want to be sure that, that we are transparent also with what is going to be the final number for this facility. And this is what I say, I know that it's going to cost more, you know, I, you know, I know that. But we need to know how big is that variance? That's it.
All right, Bill?
Yeah, I'm just a little uncomfortable with, with this amendment. Before, there's been any public involvement and public, by public, I mean anybody who's not on the mayor's ad hoc committee, which is the majority of the people who are responsible for approving this amendment. And I, I guess I would also like to hear, you know, from, maybe Paul's got the most insight. You know, why is it that the two facilities that we visited cost barely half of what we're talking about here? And why is it that McFarland was able to build a new facility for $22 million? You know, there's just, I, I don't think that the rest of us have been given enough information to be able to make an intelligent decision here.
Can I answer that? I think one thing, Bill, we got to look at, compare apples to apples. McFarland has what, 18 officers? We have 58. Their population is what? We have triple what they have.
Their facility is like 60,000 square feet.
Yeah, but you, we, we got to compare. We don't know what that facility have. And like I said, we have more people, more officers. And I think to say that a, a facility with 18 officers, and you're going to compare that to our police department. I, I think we can't do that right now. We have a communication center that we got to put in there. So we got to compare, see what that building is like and compare apples to apples, but just based on city and, and staffing, it's different. And I, I, I think one thing also, I think when the tour was made of the buildings, of the police stations that was visited with the chief, I, I think that answered a lot of questions. And I, I think, I know one alder who went, you know, a lot of questions were answered. And I don't know if we need to set up another tour of police stations so that we are looking at what is actually needed and not just looking at McFarland, looking at more of what's comparable to here.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
And, well, I was going to follow up. I agree with the mayor, we don't know what it's going to cost. But I, I think with the transparency, this budget process right here, right now, has a lot of public input already. That's what it's made for. We're going to be getting emails from people, we're going to have public comments already. So, you, you know, let's just get it, get it out there just to see what they think about this. You know, they may come up and say they totally disagree with the 41 million. But I think when we have a budget process that is really focused and have a lot of people in this community focus on that budget process, I just think now's the time to talk about it and to be very transparent. But, I mean, it's going to cost more money than the 35 million dollars.
Gabriella, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Jim, I think you make a good point that I think this is, it's good to have this discussion starting now because, and for public transparency to start having a discussion that maybe this will cost more. And people do pay attention to the budget process, so I think it's great that we can discuss this now. I'm going to mirror what some others have said and I just like, I just feel like I, we just started with this process. I saw one brief drawing of it at RCC and we talked about sustainability. But, and I've heard like miscellaneous things, like a community room that holds 100, which for me personally is confusing when we have a library and a community center and a senior center right next door. So like, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have that. I'm just saying that I have questions about that when I hear something like that. When I do talk about the scenario training bay, like I believe that that's what we used to call the, the firing range, which we discussed way back when is maybe that was a nice to have and not a requirement. And now it's sounding like that's a, that's a foredone deal part of the facility. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that I don't have enough information to make that assessment. I, I haven't even had a chance to ask a question about it. And so it seems like there's been a lot of decisions made about the design. And I thought we were at the part of the process where we were going to get, we were going to get options that were then going to be presented to the public with all that, that contextualizing information where we can ask questions. But, so like, I don't know. Like, I, I mean, I assume that we might need more money, but I just have no idea. And I feel like we just got started and I'm not sure I'm comfortable just suddenly increasing the budget without any sort of information. So it's, it just seems too early. But I take your point well, Jim. I think it's great to start the conversation now. Like, it's great to have transparency, but, but I, my comfort level is pretty low with making the decision at this point with so little information and before we've had our first public meeting or before I've even seen like drawings, detailed drawings. So yeah, that's where I am.
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I think in addition to Alder Gearhart's comment, like we haven't got enough information, but people broadly haven't got enough information to do something about it. I, I, and it's a really big expense. I mean, I just remember us having a conversation. I mean, I just remember us having a conversation a few years ago about kind of designs of the hub. And we really got in-depth information, including designs, including what things look like. And, you know, this is a lot bigger and a lot more expensive and a lot more crucial to the community than, you know, in terms of scope and size. So I would echo the past couple of statements in that I think we need more information before we move forward on an amendment.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of those comments. I, it just seems, I've made this comment before. It just seems like this is on its own trajectory. It's its own freight train that's running down some tracks. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of input from either the council or the public into this project. And, you know, while we're the ones who are sitting up here as the decision makers, if we don't know what's going on, how much less do the people in the community know what's going on? This is a lot of borrowing. This is a ton of borrowing. This is going to be the most expensive building we've ever built. In fact, it's going to be more expensive than many of our existing buildings combined. And I think there does need to be, and I've said this before, I think this whole process needs to be slowed down. And we need to have a lot more public input into what this building is going to be and how it's going to function, which is different than having a group of nine or 10 or 11 people, however many are on that committee, just kind of making this decision and pushing it forward without any input or consideration from the council. Joe?
Just following up on Jay's point, Misty, what is the impact of like the current amount budgeted in terms of borrowing? Like what would that mean in terms of paying back payments plus interest in an annual, like a typical fiscal year?
Yeah, so those are all comments that we talk about during the financial management plan through the CIP process. And so what's in there right now is the 35 million, not the additional amount. So I don't have information about what that will look like going forward. It would get included in the June financial management plan if this is approved. But I can say generally for a facility, we would borrow over 20 years. And the interest rate, we get a relatively good interest rate as a local government with low risk. But it is increasing those rates just like everything else.
Bill?
I think at a previous committee, the whole meeting, we had a presentation on this facility. And as I recall, there was like the first public involvement was going to be in November. Do we know what, when will the first public information meeting take place?
There's another date, the dates are to be determined because there's more information that we're trying to get from, is it the builder or sustainability people? I think it's sustainability.
I think Paul can answer that.
It's, Dr. Gack has to do a little more work on schematic design. But potentially we're looking at the last week of November right now for the public meeting. And then it'll come back to the council and their meeting in December for council approval of schematic design as the current scheduling. So we're still working on getting the public info. We should, a little premature yet to go to the public till we get some more things figured out. And we're meeting at Fitchburg Center to get some comments from them this week as well. So we are actively working towards putting together information needed to go to the public and present it, and then ultimately back to the council, including another refined estimate.
Misty, I was just taking a quick look here to see if I could find our last financial management plan from last year, and I can't find it. So I have a question. I don't need a super specific answer. What is our, excluding anything for TID and for the police station that's out there already, what is our current total indebtedness?
So that would be available in the budget as well. So there's, so the financial management plan, if you go to the same page that the budget is on and scroll down.
I can't find it on our website.
But then the budget actually has a debt schedule included in there, which includes an estimate for what I will borrow in 2024. And so that will be in there too. I can share my screen in just a little bit. Maybe just a little bit. Okay, so I am looking at the 2024 mayor's proposed budget. And in here, there is a debt schedule. There should be. Why don't I get, I'll get it to you. How about that, rather than me trying to find it?
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful because it seems to me that that borrowing for the police facility, if we do it at the, even if we do it at the $41 million, which we don't even know if that's going to be the number, is going to be close to our total indebtedness right now. We're going to basically double our total indebtedness. But I don't remember because, you know, I don't remember everything anymore. And I can't find, I can't find the, you know, I found the budget.
It's in the website.
I'm sure it is. I'm looking on our website and I can't find it, which is a frequent problem that I have because our website is not laid out very well. But I, you know, I would have loved to have been able to find that financial management plan that we do every, that we go through every April. But I don't see it on here. I don't even see a place where it would be. You got any ideas?
Do search and look for that, it's going to show up.
Here, let me.
It's under finance.
I'm on the finance page.
So for the financial management plan, you want, on the finance page, there's financial records and reports.
Yes.
Where the budget is at the top. If you scroll down, there is a financial management plan about halfway down. So the 2023 FMP done in June of 28th of 2003. I have it up on the screen, the link.
Excellent. I have located that now. That's the 2023. So that's what we just went through this past year, right?
Correct. So it was done in June of '23.
So what is, so somewhere in here will be our total non-TID indebtedness.
Well, I also have the work paper that I use for the 2024 budget. And our total indebtedness expected at the end of 2024, which would include the full 35 million for the police facility, would be 91 million.
Okay, so that's going to be about a third. So this will, this is going to increase our total indebtedness by 50% in one building.
Yes.
So I mean, I think that's something to keep in mind as we're going through this process.
And if I may, some of that is because we have been paying off our debt relatively quickly. And the last two years, we haven't borrowed. I've been delaying that till 2024. So percentage wise, a part of that is we've been artificially low the last couple of years.
Julia?
Yes, Misty, what is the total capacity that we have the debt to be and follow our policy? You know, we have a policy?
Yeah, so that information's in the FMP as well. So there's two different financial policies we have that looks at the amount of debt we can have. One is on the amount of taxes that goes to pay off debt. And then one is how much statutory, and then our policy of our equalized value. So the equalized value piece, I can tell you the city's maximum amount as of the end of 20, well, we'll say the end of 2024 is 186 million, including the 35 million for the police facility. We would be at about half of what our city imposed policy is for that level of debt.
So we have a capacity?
Yes.
Oh, we have, we have capacity. We can borrow money till the cows come home. But just because we can, doesn't mean we should. Bill?
Yeah, so we've got, I don't know what the latest information is, 34,000 residents or something. So a $35 million facility represents roughly $1,000 per man, woman, and infant in the city. For those of us who are new to local government, is that a reasonable number? And, you know, if we go up higher, we're talking more like 1,200 per live body in the city. I have no idea whether that's a reasonable number or not.
Gabriella, were you waving?
Yeah, she could.
Yeah, if Bill, if someone wants to answer Bill's questions first, I do have something different to say.
Well, please do.
If anyone wants to comment on it. Okay, so Paul, can I just clarify? You said that we're looking at a potential public meeting in late November?
Yeah, the weekend of Thanksgiving.
Okay, and if, and we don't have a date set yet?
No, we should get that hopefully finalized in the next week here.
Yeah, we should get it out.
We'll get the word out there, everybody.
Yeah, because we have Chris, we have Halloween, and then you have Thanksgiving, Black Friday, Giving Tuesday. Like the noise around this time of year is so loud that advertising for anything at this time of year is just really tough. So if we can get it on the calendar like now.
I agree when you get that figured out. Hopefully next week here with that date set.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we shall move on. The next one is amendment number 14, which is Alder Herbst. Dave, this is the reduce the scope of the Wayland Road shoulder paving.
Thank you, Jay. So what I, I'm going to preface this, kind of have three, three things I'm looking at here. We have, and we're looking at safety on Wayland Road. We have the park at McKee, and we have a shelter at Tower Hill. And we're trying to get all these done. And what I'm offering you is an option kind of to do this. I'm riding Wayland Road all the time. We heard from a teacher in Verona that rides it a lot. And I agree with her on a number of things, but my feeling, I rode that road probably over 200 miles this summer while preparing for the ragby. And it's, it's rideable. There's two, there's two parts where the sightlines are obscured near the, near the end of Fitchrona. If we improve those, A, we would fix the safety. And I think we do that for a couple hundred thousand dollars. Then we have money for some of these other options. I would also note that since this first came on, we've spent, it's probably by the time you look at Lacy Road, what we're doing, well over a million dollars, but bike lanes on Lacy Road and a trail, which is roughly less than a mile from there. So we have a parallel east-west path that people can travel safely on their bicycles. So that's, that's why I think we can improve the safety, make it rideable for less money. So that's all. I'll entertain any questions.
Before we get into that, I saw that Ross had written a memo here. And I don't know, Tim, if you're on to talk about that or not?
Yeah, I can talk about it. This memo that Ross wrote just kind of compares the original project to what Alder Herbst is proposing, both cost-wise and kind of also a description. Within the memo, I believe Ross included an exhibit kind of showing the project limits of both the original project and then also the proposed amendment. So on this map here, the original project shown in red, which is from Fish Hat Street Road West to Fitchrona Road. And then what Alder Herbst is proposing is shown in the blue, which is kind of on the west end of the section close to Fitchrona Road. And then within the memo, there's two tables. Table one showing the original project cost. And then table two shows the proposed cost for the amended budget.
Okay. Somebody had a hand up. Julia?
I will say that I like that, this, you know, this amendment. So, you know, I say that it's a, it's a good compromise, but.
Gabriella?
I just want to clarify, so this means that we're going to add more shoulders, but not all shoulders? So the bikers will still be weaving in and out of traffic? Is that what this would accomplish?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I'll just reiterate what I learned from Angie yesterday, that weaving in and out is actually more dangerous than just being in the street. And I, I did not realize that until she shared that, but I definitely think that's an important context.
Bill?
I think that term weaving in and out of traffic is a little, the lane ends and you merge, you merge in where the cars have good sightlines in front of you in those areas. I think it's, you know, is there danger there? Yes. You know, is there danger, riding bicycle is a dangerous activity. You know, there's an inherent risk even on the bike trail. I'm offering you something that will prove the safety, make it, make it rideable and give us options to get other things done in the city at the same time. Thank you.
Bill?
Well, so I guess I would like to ask Dave, when he says safety, whose safety is he talking about? Because, you know, I was just going to, I was going to reiterate what Gabriella had said is that it is dangerous to be going on and off of those shoulders like that. And if, if there's a car behind you, they can't necessarily see that the shoulder is about to end. And so if you, if you come back into the travel lane and they're too close to you, they're going to have difficulty stopping.
Bob's is trump. Okay.
Dave?
They can see, I, I, I wrote it. I can see, you can see, they can see, you know, the road is, road is clear, it's wide. You can, you can see those, those areas, you know, coming in and, coming in and out. Yeah, there's, there's some danger, yes. You know, I could say, I think you can, we can, we can straighten this out, you know, make it, make it safer. And you also have to keep in mind, you know, there is a parallel route for safety. You've got Lacy Road, and when you get to the end at Fitchrona Road, there's no more bike lanes, you know. Drust it away on Wayland down to Verona, you're much better off going up and traveling Lacy than you can get on a bike trail to go to Verona. I can improve the safety on this for a modest, modest amount. The safety bill also, it's the safety of both the bikers and the cars. You improve the sightlines so a car can pass a biker, you know, and he can see ahead of him, that's fine. What you don't want is him passing, passing a biker and not being able to see over the hill and then he's in the other lane. You know, what I'm proposing allows the, allows any time a biker, a car has to pass a bike, you have sightlines to see ahead of him. And so, you know, I, I reject it. I don't care about safety. I'm a kind of a realist. Did someone get hurt on this road? Yes. Did someone get hurt on any of our roads? And the other thing I would add is, you know, 99.9% of our residents do not ride their bikes on this road. You know, it's just not, you know, some of the real active bicyclists ride a lot like myself. But the vast, vast majority of our residents don't ride their bikes on this road. And we shouldn't spend that much money on it. Possibly in the future when we have to, when we're ready for repaving on that, maybe we could add them at that time. So that's all.
All right, anyone else? Oh, Gabriella?
Tim, more of like a construction cost, so like assuming we build all the lanes, you know, assuming we build all the bike lanes, that includes like regrading the sides so that you can build a bike lane. And that work will, like, the value of that work is maintained when we repave the road completely, right? Like, because like, if we didn't do the bike lanes now, and we want to repave the road, we would still have to build up and regrade in order to build the wider street down the road. Is that, is that correct? I'm just trying to figure out that this, this cost is not just the paving, right? It's, it's the work.
There are regrading of the ditches and there are some existing trees that could be an issue too.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else? All right, we will move on to my amendment, which was really only here as a placeholder in case the R17723 found a way to pass last night. But because it didn't, I'm going to most likely end up withdrawing this amendment tomorrow since it will, or in a couple of weeks, since it will no longer be needed.
Can I, I have a question about this? Can I, I have a question about this?
It's going to be withdrawn.
Well, I, I'm going to ask you a compromise, okay? Because you mentioned that we can use debt to do these bike lanes. That one could be a good option, that we can use debt to do this, and then we keep the ARPA fund for the kids crossing and the Tower Hill.
Okay.
It could be a compromise that we can keep the two, you know, the kids crossing, the Tower Hill funding from the ARPA, and then if we can use debt to use the bike lanes, even though I-
That's fine. I'm okay with that.
Okay. I am. It's a compromise.
All right.
So procedurally, if I may, so the $830,000 for Wayland Road is currently in the 2023 budget, and that was not removed by the council. So now, if you're going to add another $830,000 in 2024 of borrowed money, you'll be duplicating it. So if that's your proposal and said as you want to change the funding source from tid closure to debt, it would be more appropriate to do it as a budget amendment, similar to the one that was just considered.
Gotcha. Okay, so this will still be withdrawn?
No, because, you know, because we can keep it, and then we can bring another budget amendment to-
This is an amendment to the 24, 2024 budget. So what happened last night is that we did not change the 2023 budget. So this one becomes moot at that point. Well, I mean, we can take your advice, or we can take the finance director's advice. I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with Misty on that.
No, we, I am saying that we can do it, but it's going to take extra step, you know, that's it.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so with that, we will move on to Amendment Number 16, which is also Alder Herbst. This is to remove the McGaw Park volleyball post replacements. Dave?
Yeah, this has no budget impact. I, I went and I looked at this with Patrick Chaney. He had a level with me, and we looked at it. I, it just doesn't appear to me that this needs to be replaced, and we, volleyball posts are perfectly good shape, and I don't, I don't believe we should do them, that's all.
All right. Scott, I see you are on the line. Did you want to address this issue?
Maybe just in that, you know, as we continue to try to upgrade and improve all of our facilities within the park system, the volleyball standards, that's, you know, one of the many amenities that we have within the park system that we try to update and, and, you know, improve as, as the years go by.
A bunch of questions about this, but I just want to ask one to start this off. What is the source of the disagreement between you and Patrick Chaney about whether these posts need to be replaced?
I, I don't know, Jay. I, like I say, this is, you know, this is similar to other, you know, improvements that we have within the park system, and, and certainly, I, I think, you know, to Patrick's point, they're, they're functionable, they're, you know, but they're, they're ancient, and they're, you know, it's hard for them to up and down, and those kinds of things. So similar to when we, you know, redo basketball courts, we'll, we'll update and upgrade the, the basketball hoops. So it's really just a, you know, one of the, the replacement items that we have within the, within the park system. And Patrick is, is, you know, he, he feels that it's, it's functionable, and it, and it works, and, and, and he had the similar concern when we, if you recall back, we upgraded the, or actually included some, some lighting in McGaw Park along the, the trails. There was an existing light feature near, near the volleyball courts that was old, and, and what we did is we replaced that with a newer, a newer, a newer light pole, which was more consistent with what we had in the other one. So it's, you know, I think it's a, you know, it's a conservative view that, that Patrick has, and I respect. And like I say, from, from the park perspective, we're continuing to try to update and, and approve our facilities within the park system.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, so I'm going to give you some history about this volleyball post. We discussed this in detail in Parks Committee when I was in Park Committee. I think we discussed that in last CIP, because Patrick was in Parks and he wanted to remove it. And the Parks Commissioners at that point, we decided that we want to keep this, because we, we, we see this, like, it's not only money as only for the McGaw volleyball poles, but we can use those for repairs, those pole in McKee has volleyball court, and also, what is the other park? Tower Hill has. So the idea was to keep that money in case that we need to use it from, for the other parks, that it hold volleyball court. And because when, when we remove this money from the CIP, is, you know, the probability that pull back this money to repair is going to be slim. So, and we have an hard discussion, and practically the entire Park Commissioners, Commissioner at that time, we said we want to keep it, because we can use this fund also not only for the McGaw volleyball post, but in case that we need to repair other ones in other So, and I think with this, they discussed it again this year during CIP 2, okay? So, so that one, want to give you some context about the history of the volleyball post, something that is coming from a couple of years, so.
Well, I know it's, it seems to come up a lot. Bill?
Yeah, I'm just reading the section of the CIP that was included in here, and it says, you know, the, in the 2023 to 2032 CIP, we moved McGaw miscellaneous updates from Project 6211 to this project, including volleyball posts in 2024. So is that, I mean, that seems to be the reason that Patrick Chaney is saying these volleyball posts that we're talking about in McGaw Park are perfectly fine. But, I mean, do we just need to update the verbiage in there with an additional note saying, hey, this is for volleyball posts in any park?
It's okay if I respond a little bit?
Oh, boy.
Yep, so I, I have the page from the CIP up, and so it is important to note that if this amendment is approved, it's not going to change the funding for all of the parks. All that this amendment would do is it would remove the volleyball posts from the 2024 listing here. So the, the amount of funding would still be available, just for other park facilities that need to be changed. And then the reason why it was, was moved, that note that you brought up, Alder Jetser, is we closed out that CIP 6211 and 6212 and just consolidated them here. So that's why that note is there for history.
Yeah, go ahead.
I also want to add that as, just from the staff perspective, you know, we do also try to be proactive where we can, and oftentimes with park amenities, those are some of our most visible amenities for many of our residents. And, you know, while these make posts, in this particular instance, may be currently level and straight, what's to say next spring they're not? And/or we spend the money on other volleyball posts that are also in need of replacement, and at some point throughout the year, those posts now become out of alignment, and we don't have money to properly, to, to replace those. So I, I don't know, is, this is obviously a council decision, clearly, but I don't know as though the council wants staff to wait until things have become unusable before they go and replace them, when we're trying to do it proactively, when things have generally met their expected lifespan.
Before I get to Gabriella, Scott, can I just ask you one more question that may be relevant? So you were mentioning that the ratcheting mechanism may be wearing out on these poles. Is that something that can be replaced on its own? Or is that, like, welded to the pole, and you can't just take it off and pop a new one on?
Yeah, I think it is, it is attached to the, to the pole.
It on, or is it with U-bolts, or how did-
Turn around and back and pop off a bias today. Can I probably achieve?
It, it's welded on, yeah.
Yeah, so, so in order to replace that ratcheting mechanism, you have to replace the whole pole?
Yeah, then it really becomes cobbled like the current ones are.
Yeah, okay. Gabriella?
I mean, this doesn't change the budget at all, like, in terms of actual funding, and I am inclined to trust staff's assessment of when things need to be replaced, so I'm not going to support this amendment. But I also say I will put a word in for people that aren't very good at using old equipment. I am not the kind of person that can, if it's hard to use, I'm probably the kind of person that wouldn't be able to use it. So I'm going to defend the people that might need the newer system out there, and that might be a good thing for the people that want to use it. So like, not everyone's good at using old equipment. I think it's okay to update, update things from time to time, based on park staff assessment. I trust what they, what they have to say, and I, this is a very specific, nitty-gritty detail, and ultimately doesn't change the budget, and I just don't think we should be getting into the weeds on park staff decisions.
Dave, did you have another comment that you were trying to insert? Oh, what is that?
We don't replace stuff when it's not, you know, things, things last, and there's no, there's no reason to replace this, and yes, the, the ratcheting mechanism could be changed. I could go to, go to Farmer Fleet, and I can buy a boat, one thing for pulling your boat on, and that could be replaced for, for very little money, for a couple hundred dollars on each, on each one. So I'm thinking the point is, you know, I want to be proactive, but this does not need to be, not, there's nothing wrong with this right now, and it's a bad policy. It's a, it's a bad policy to replace stuff that doesn't, you know, what, what messages that send to our, to our residents and our taxpayers? That's, that's all I'll say on it.
All right, any other questions on this amendment? Seeing none, we will move on to Amendment Number 17, which is Gabriella's. This is to reinstate the Tower Hill shelter replacement.
Thank you, yes. Amendment Number 17 is reinstate Tower Hill shelter replacement. I did mention this last night when we discussed that resolution. This was originally supposed to be in the 2024 budget. It's included in the CIP as a 2024 project using ARPA-TID financing. It was removed from the 2024 budget in the hope that it would be included in the 2023 budget through that amendment, which we all know failed last night. So therefore, it's not included in 2024 at all. So I put this amendment in anticipating that that resolution might fail. Because it was intended in the CIP to be included in 2024, I think we should reinstate it. There is, I did talk to Misty, there is enough funding. I know that there's limited funding, but there is enough funding in the ARPA-TID pot to put this amount of money towards the Tower Hill shelter. It was built in 1974, it's super old, needs to be replaced, used very frequently. I think it's a good use of this type of money. And also, I'll just put a plug in that I, you know, we also have money to decide for, for a solar park shelter, and we should consider maybe this one for that, too. I don't know if that's a good fit for it, but I want, I'd love Park Staff to think about that, if that's a possibility. But yes, I hope we can, I hope we can, that's not part of this amendment, but I just wanted to say that as a side note. But yeah, I hope, I hope we all are putting this back in where it was originally supposed to be in the CIP. Thanks.
Scott, any comments on this one?
Oh, Randy has one. What is doing?
Yeah, but Scott's our staff member.
Yeah, I, I did put together a, a memo, Jay, which kind of alludes to what Gabriella mentioned, as far as the age, and heavily used, and-
All right. Randy, were, Randy, were you waving at us?
Yes, yes, I, I am and was. I drive past this shelter every weekend in Janesville, and this shelter does have a lot of use. I mean, and I don't know a Saturday and Sunday when it's not in use, so at this point in time, I would be inclined to, to support it. But I have a broader question, and it's really kind of directed to Misty and to Chad. And I believe there was a conversation a number of years ago that, the conversation centered around rehabbing facilities, parks and so forth, and using park money. I know, I know it's only, it's limited, the, the money that's in lieu of, that we receive from developers, is used strictly for new parks and new amenities. Is there any way to revise that, that policy, or is that governed by state statute, or is that, is that, is that something strictly that was set up by Fitchburg? And I, I just would like to see some of the, some of our facilities are aging, maybe, maybe we should look at another source, is what I'm saying. Misty or Chad, can you comment?
Yep, the legal opinion we currently have is that state statute says that the fees that are collected from the development need to be towards park amenities that serve that development. And so since there's no fees collected that would serve, that would use Tower Hill as their main shelter, that would not be eligible. And that's a state statute requirement.
Yeah, all right. You answered my question, then, okay, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, follow-up on that. So, I mean, developments age, parks age, over time, I mean, was this, are the, the park fees a one-time only? There's never any ongoing maintenance? So it, the park just has to crumble over time and, and fall into disuse?
I think, I think the intention is then that the taxes that are paid by that new area would go towards subsidizing the, the city government in total. But those park fees are specifically for the creation of that new park, and then for people that, or the developments that pay in that fee in lieu, is to create a park somewhere else, because they're not going to have one within their development.
Bill?
A follow-up question also, probably in Misty's wheelhouse. I'm looking at the CIP page here, and there's talk of, you know, $50,000 in replacement fund, which got delayed. But just overall, where is the city in terms of, like, if we were fully funded, what would, what's the difference between where we are now and if we were fully funded in terms of replacement fund for everything in the city? I mean, are we talking $100 million, or $10 million, or what?
Yeah, so it would be a lot. We've really been trying to address what that ongoing costs are incrementally on the project. So yes, this one was originally set up as a replacement fund, you'll see it's still going on, but because it kept getting eaten away as decisions were made, that money is not available to actually do this Tower Hill shelter. But there's a handful of shelters that are all included in that same CIP. So this is a great example of one that this replacement fund needs to build up, and it will have to continue to be delayed until that funding is available.
Yeah, the shelter looks and feels like it was built in 1974, and, you know, it's, it's just one of those things where if we're, if we're actually trying to be a modern city, it's, it's time to, to fix it, to replace it, to do, to make it look like a modern facility that people would actually want to use. So I support this. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Amendment 18, which is a few more pages down, which is from Alder Herbst. This is, Dave, this is to add maintenance costs to extend the life of Kids Crossing Playground.
Okay, Jay, on this one, you know, we've, what was in the budget was, you know, raising half a million, using the half million to replace that. I, I spent the Sunday afternoon over there a couple of weeks ago. I walked, I walked in, I shook every member on the entire, on the entire Kids Crossing. I talked to every parent there that was there with their families, you know, do you, do you like the park? Do you feel it's in good condition? And I was told there's so much, there's so much rotten wood. I found two posts that on the top were rotten, that we could replace. What I, what I'd like to do, so we can improve safety, Wayland, do the, do the shelter at Tower Hill, and extend the life of this 10 years, is let's, let's raise a couple hundred thousand and go in there and refurbish it. You know, the wood that's sad, we replace, we sand, we get people volunteers, we sand down the entire thing, we repaint it, and it should easily last another 10 years. So that's, that's all I'll say on it.
All right. Scott, you, do you have any things you want to add to this?
Well, like, again, I, I provided a, a staff memo, and, and certainly I would, I would offer an invitation for Alder Herbst and Jordan and I to go down, and we could maybe take a closer look and, and show, you know, and show what we, what we do see as, as, as the facility wearing out. You know, included in my information, it was built in 2001 with a life expectancy of 20 years, with good, good maintenance practices, and we have done a good job of staining and painting, and really, we've gotten a little bit beyond- bit beyond that expected life. But, but it's getting to the point now where, you know, you try to replace a board and you're, 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 you know, trying to, you know, trying to fasten a, a new board and into something that is, isn't able to accept, you know, a screw. So certainly, I'd, I'd be willing and welcome the, the opportunity to go down there and take a look at it with Alder, Alder Person, Herbst and Jordan so that we could share what we're, what we're seeing in the facility.
Scott?
Scott, I would welcome that.
Scott, you were here when we built this, right?
I was not.
Oh, so this happened before you? Okay. So when we, when we originally built this, this was a community effort where there was a lot of fundraising that happened in the community and a lot of volunteers from the community who actually worked on this. And I know it was a pretty monumental effort to get all the people rounded up to, to make it happen. But I thought it was a great community building exercise. So do you have any thoughts as to what could be done if we wanted to try to do something like that again to rehab it?
First off, we'd need a fundraising chair. So it sounds, you know, it sounds like you might be interested in doing that, Jay, being the.
Dave and I will be both, will be joint chairs.
Very good.
All right, Jay, for once I agree with you, Jay.
Well, well, in all, in all honesty, I, you know, we've been, we've been speaking and I've been speaking to, to Mr. Breckland, the idea of creating a Friends of the Pittsburgh Parks group. As you're aware, the city staff is, isn't able to go out and raise funds. But certainly I could see a Friends of the Pittsburgh Parks being formed. And, and this I see as a potential first project that, that the group could, could go out and, and raise dollars to, and I, and I think it would be an easy sell, to be honest with you. You know, McKee Farms Park and Kids Crossing is, is well known and, and I think, you know, the idea of volunteers, I think that, you know, that's a novel idea, but I, you know, at the end of the day, I think maybe that, the, the reality of that happening would, would be tough. But certainly I think there would be support within the community and our business community to provide, to provide dollars to Friends of the Pittsburgh Park to, to supplement the city's investment to, to really improve this, this facility. It's, it's a great facility, a lot of people, and we, you know, over the years, we probably have 20 or 25 annual events that are held at McKee Farms Park. So it really is a, a kind of a signature facility. And we'd really, I think it, it'd really be cool to kind of take it up a notch, if you would. And, and, and to, you know, other comments that I've heard that, you know, we're, the people, people within our community, they, they look at our parks and they look at our park facilities and, you know, and when we're out doing things to improve those facilities, the residents, you know, they appreciate that and they, they know that we're, you know, cognizant of, of that and taking the time to make sure that it's a, that it's a nice facility for the public. So, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, Jay, but, you know, it's more general, general thoughts that I have.
Well, kind of, but you, you weren't here when we did it. But we had groups, you know, on, we built that, I think it was, I think it was over three weekends. And we had volunteers from the community who put most of that park together. There were anywhere between, between 50 and 100 people every day of those three weekends. And there was, there was a foreman who was from, I don't, was it, was it this Leathers that is that you included in the packet? Is that who originally was there?
That was, that was the lead, the lead group that helped put that volunteer effort together.
Yeah, so they did the one, they, they also did the one in Manona. And that one is a couple of years older than ours, so they must have been through part of this process already. But I think we should reach out and find out because I think it would be, you know, right now, the city struggles with finding really good community activities that bring people together from all over the city. But when we did that construction project, it brought people together, it brought all kinds of people out to come and help volunteer. You know, sometimes they, people were only there for three or four hours. But we probably had a total of 500 people working on Kids Crossing over those three weekends. And I bet we could get those people again. Bill?
Noted, we could.
Oh, go ahead, Scott. I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Well, yeah, certain, noted, absolutely, Jay. I, and, and, you know, I think it's one thing to, you know, I guess there's two pieces to it. There's the funds, right? You've got to have the funds. And then there's a, you know, there, there's certainly probably pieces of a reconstruction or a new playground that can be, that can be handled by volunteers. So I think, I think certainly providing that opportunity and giving that opportunity to community would be, would be good. But certainly the, you know, I don't know if the community, I would suspect that the, the dollars were raised for, for it. The savings was where the, the residents helped install the, the purchased products.
That, we, we raised, I think it was, if my memory is correct, I think we raised $400,000. And then with all the volunteers, that's what made it happen. So most of the money that was raised went to materials, not to construction. And obviously there were certain, yeah, there were obviously certain things they did, like they, they put all the vertical posts in that required drilling holes and they ran the earth moving equipment and whatnot and got that part of it done. But then when we arrived there to, to build the actual stuff, attach it to the poles that were already there, that was all volunteers.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I like that. I like that. Yep.
All right, now I'll go to Bill.
Yeah, so Scott mentioned the, you know, the, all the events that take place. And perhaps the biggest one is the Kids Build Wisconsin Weekend. Is there an opportunity to partner with any of those vendors?
Sure.
To, I mean, has that been discussed in the past?
No, not that I know of, but.
Chad knows.
Maybe Chad knows.
I don't know the answer to that specific question. But I'm sensing that in the last, you know, few weeks here, as the Kids Crossing project has gotten some more attention from the council, that perhaps I'd like to offer to the council that I, we work, Scott and I work together to look to update the estimate on what the cost to replace the park would be. I'm just looking at the, the LNS report here that indicates a new structure with clearly less maintenance required or lower maintenance required products, i.e. no wood, could be installed. And granted, this is five years ago, cost of materials only at about 300,000. And, you know, rough calculations with about 7% adjustments over the last five years puts that at about 425 to 450. And it also may be helpful for us to get a better idea of what the condition of this is. Scott and Jordan and I met this week to talk about our monthly park rec and forestry update. And Jordan had a few fasteners from the Kids Crossing Playground that had shown evidence of corrosion. And you may recall, as Jordan reminded me, that about 20 years ago, there was issues associated with fasteners and treated lumber such as this. Those sorts of things have now been, been addressed through a variety of engineering and chemical treatments. But I'm willing to offer to the council, I know it may not necessarily resolve this conversation for the evening or even for the 14th, but perhaps it seems like some additional information would be helpful as the council further considers this, this project.
All right. Anyone else? Gabriella?
So I, I really love this idea. And I know that Dave and Jay both have a lot of experience with engaging the public. And I actually love the idea of, of having a, a lot, a big community effort to rebuild this park. One of the things I love about Kids Crossing is because it feels, it's kind of quirky. It's not like any other park around the area. It's not, it's obviously made like with love and it's, it's different. And I want the whatever, whatever repair or whatever replacement it is to have some of that spirit in it still. I don't want it to become just a standard, you know, plastic structure. I want it to be more than that. So I do like this idea. The one thing that I, I worry about is the substrate for the park, that like the, you know, ground up tires or whatever it is. That in terms of like, a lot of people can't walk on that. And like, you know, there are ramps as part of that park, but if a kid has limited mobility or they have a wheelchair or a walker, they're not going to be able to get through that, that substrate. Like they can't walk on it. So even if they wanted to use the park, there, it's inaccessible. So like, if we wanted to do, that's one of the things that really keeps me from wanting to just extend this park for 10 years, is it's actually not just the park itself, but it's the, it's the access to the park, specifically the substrate. So I guess I would, and since Chad brought this up, like I, I think we do need to have a discussion about this because my worry is that we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to close it down before we have a plan for replacing it or fixing it. But maybe there is an opportunity to fix it for a much smaller city contribution than $500,000, maybe something that's more reasonable that we can do in this shorter timeframe and we can fill in the gap with community donations and community labor. But I do think that we do need some, some city, potentially some city input to, to do things like replace the, the floor so that it can be accessed by more kids. So I guess because this doesn't have a budget impact, I, I think maybe we can carry this conversation into next year. But I do think that this is a good point and I think we really do need to discuss this, we need to start really discussing this and bringing it forward so we can create a plan. So I guess I don't know exactly where I stand, but I really appreciate the idea and the conversation, Dave. And, and I do want to learn a lot more and want to talk about it more.
Julia?
Yes, the other thing that I want to mention is that Scott and I, we are talking about, we have been talking about this idea of creating the Friends of the Pittsburgh Parks because, you know, the, the city cannot go and fundraise, you know? We cannot do that. We are not allowed to do that. So we need to work, work with a, a not-for-profit organization that is, they can do all the fundraising for us. So, and I think there is, there is, there are a couple of neighbors that they, they brought to our attention, the idea of how we can create these Friends of the Pittsburgh Parks, you know? So it's something that, something that Scott and I, we are going to continue to discuss and maybe how to incorporate the Pittsburgh Chamber in the conversation too. So I think we can establish that group of people, then we can do, they can do the fundraising for us. Maybe we can in the future create an endowment fund too, to, for the operational cost. So, but I think it's going to be another option, you know, if we can go that, if we can go through that route too, you know what I mean? So.
All right. Any other questions on that? Any comments? All right. Seeing as we've been sitting here now for three hours. Anyone want to take a five minute break?
We're almost done. I talk real fast.
Well, since, since the Misty Show is beginning then, so that's the end of the council amendments that have been proposed. So we'll move on to the omnibus amendments that Misty has for us and then we will move on. So, take it away.
Omnibus Amendment A is the EMS Commission did modify their budget in order to take that additional levy limit adjustment. So this amendment would reflect that revised Fitcherona EMS budget. It doesn't have an impact on our levy limits because the full amount that the budget went up is going to be increased of that levy limit adjustment that we get. So it's relatively neutral, but sets us up for a good position for next year. B is the GTA increase that we've kind of talked about a couple other times today, so I won't spend too much on it. But ultimately, the Town of Madison impact was more significant than I expected, to good news, $125,000 more in revenue that we're expecting from the state that then reduces the amount of property taxes. So now we have more taxes we could spend. And then the last one, omnibus Amendment C is to adjust the Metro Transit expense and state aid. This has no levy impact, but the Metro Finance Team, I think it was, looked at our budget amounts and made a recommendation for us to tweak our total expense and our federal aid, or our state aid amount. So that's reflected in there. And then I noticed that we actually included it in the budget as federal aid, but it was state aid instead. And that's somewhat important in my audit world, so reclassifying that as well. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for Misty on any of those? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to our next item, Resolution R 188-23, a resolution adopting special rules for the 2024 budget adoption. Is this yours or is this Chad's?
Well, this would be me too.
Okay, well, take it away.
So the last handful of years now, we've been really struggling with meeting levy limits. And so we needed to add an additional part to our process that we could go back and reconsider amendments if we didn't meet levy limits at the end of the adoption night. So this is the exact same process that was approved last year. It's what's being proposed currently. It does still keep the same ordinance requirement, so the number of times you're allowed to speak, the timing of how long we can speak on an amendment without an extension, all of that still stays the same. The difference is at the end of the night, when we get through all of the amendments, if we don't meet levy limits, we could possibly reconsider some of the ones that are already on there. Still no new amendments off the floor because they haven't been vetted, but you can reconsider your votes on the ones that were on the table before.
All right. Any questions on that? Seeing none, what do we have on the referendum?
We have a real brief update. Internal work group consisting of Misty, I, Deputy City Administrator Adam Sayer and City Clerk Tracy Olenberg have been meeting to begin to formulate some options for the council to consider as it relates to a few different potential referendum amounts and what could be included in those amounts. We're focusing on a few different buckets, most notably staffing, transit, other operating costs associated with facilities and potential for cost of living adjustments are kind of the three, I'm sorry, four things that we're discussing right now. We met with Miller Communications this afternoon to get a check in with them and ensure that we're continuing on the right path and we're all working together on the same common timeline. And we, we, we will be meeting again with them in about three weeks to do another check in. And we are at this point in time anticipating that some public outreach in the form of community surveys will be taking place in early first quarter of next year.
Groovy. All right. Any other comments, questions on that? Seeing none, that brings us up to our announcements, which is the next committee of the whole meeting is November 29th, when we should have substantially more information on the referendum. And that brings us up to item number eight. As we all.
I move to adjourn.
Hey, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.